I gotta shoot my head.
It does. Supposed to be right in as the platter.
Oh, I'm not sure.
You heard that? You heard that, Todd?
So, you're witnessing now. I don't watch those shows.
Sixty five calls for a party. Pledge your allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Steve Philbin.
Here.
Council members Kevin Robinson.
Here.
Donnie Baller.
Here.
Robert Bower.
Here.
Sarah Buckett.
Here.
All right, moving on to make the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Newbauer makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Yeah, councilman.
May I suggest that we have nine man chartering.
What? Where do you have it?
So that would be the elder front office.
Okay, you want to add that in there?
Yeah, nine men.
Well, because you sent a petition lying to us. Why don't you make this part of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would make the motion without amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to make this a part of the agenda. Amendment to make this part of the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor, the amendment.
Councilmember Robinson makes a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We're very appreciative of reminding us of that. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda? Make the motion, Mayor. Councilmember Robinson makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we clarify on B, the annual report, can we clarify for the judge on that?
Okay, we can pull it up and clarify. Okay. So we'll have to amend that, Kevin. We'll file item B for clarification. So I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's consent agenda barring item B.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, barring item B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Robinson makes a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Okay. So, I will explain the 2019 annual charter report. We had a meeting on that. In 2019, I brought up a concern that I had heard from residents before about how at the last council that went out in 17, they had one of the council members resigned, and he did it after the election and before his term was up. So that floated, the way the charter reads is the old council would make the decision through an application. Otherwise, we'd have a special election, which would cost more money. So what happened was Jerry Tivit at the time was running against me, and he lost the election, but through this process, got put on the council through an appointment ship. It was presented to me through campaign and on post pages, brought to my attention by Sarah Ridwick, that people thought it was backdoor. In other words, they had voted for basically a majority change between two council members, the council member Robinson Bauer, the council member Newbauer, myself, as a majority change. What would happen was he backdoored basically in through an appointment ship made by the old council. So what I brought up at that meeting in 19 to be researched and brought to our attention in the next meeting that was just held here in February, January, actually, January, was that, in my opinion, because there was a population voted for a change, the change should be going all the way through to the fact that the new council should be the one that makes the appointment of a vacant seat. And why I say that is because they made a change, but the change was not a thorough change because still part of the old regime still came back in. It didn't make sense to me that when the electorate voted for a majority change, they didn't get the complete change they wanted. And I had heard that through the campaign trail and the polls, that people thought it was backdoor. Their choice wasn't received, and it was a backdoor choice. I sat in the meeting for the appointment ship, and I could tell you that it was pretty much a slam dunk on who was going to be selected to take that seat. So I brought that up in 19 to the charter commission. They checked it out and brought it to this meeting in January that we talked about. What happened was, it turned out that we could not convince the majority of the seven man charter commission to change the commission. I felt they were right in deciding not to do a special election because that is a lot of time effort and it's a lot of money, and so it would also be a back-to-back election. It's hard enough to get people out for a real major election versus a second election in the close proximity of time. So I still feel that the public got shortchanged because, again, they made a change for a majority of two council members and mayor, but someone from the old council got in through a process that I felt should have gone through, should have waited. It would have been November, December timeframe. November and December are usually slow, especially in December for council meetings and things the council has to take care of. Also, it would only affect a 5-0 vote, which only happens rarely. Most votes are 3-2 or 4-1 on a 5-0 vote rather, so 5-0 votes would be rare. So you could pretty much slide through till December until January until the new council takes effect. They didn't buy that. They felt there was shortchange in the old council. I didn't agree with that. I still don't agree with that. I voted against that, so did Sarah vote against that, but we were outmanned by the two. So I'm just letting the public know why it's on here and what it's about, and I thank Sarah for bringing that up to clarify that. I felt, again, that it allows for distrust in the electorate, and I don't like that. I think the electorate should trust and be confident that their vote counts. It's big to me on the federal level, state level, all levels, that you feel that when you mark that dot on that ballot, your ballot comes. And it's not backtrack or backdoor in this case, which I felt happened. So I just want to let everybody know. We tried to change it. We did get it changed. Maybe down the road we can, but as of now, we didn't. So if it ever were to happen again, it would be to the old council to decide, not the new council. Again, I didn't see the real fallout effect because, again, very little business happens between November, December, at the end of the year, and I felt that, again, the public made the change. It should really, they should be rewarded coming to the poll, making a solid change, and it wasn't done like that. So, once again, we tried, we failed, we'll try again. That's the best thing I can say. So I'm at, do I have any questions about that? Kevin?
No, sir.
So?
One other thing I want to add is that the judge that we had listed isn't the current sitting judge, and in order to apply for the charter commission, which will be happening here, I believe, they need to know the correct judge, just to...
Right. Judge Menlo was, but as of September of 2019, the governor also appointed Melissa Saterback, S-A-T-E-R-B-A-K, as the 10th District Court Judge, which is where you said you pledged to for taking that seat. But right now, the seats, no seat is available to the 21.
Yep.
So, anyway, the public will be informed about that anyways. But this is just clarification. So, other no questions. Do I have a motion to, to re-foot in or?
Pass the one.
Pass the one item? The pass of item B, 2019 annual charter report, do I have a motion?
I'll make some motions.
Councilmember Ridwick makes a motion or a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Councilmember Robinson makes that second. Partner for discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, open, let's see. We have a segment being opened to the public. Do we have anyone?
Yes. Bernadette Duvin?
Yes. There.
Just state your name and address at all for the record. Oh, Bernadette Duvin, my address?
Yeah.
3427-2171.
Okay.
And I own a fourplex on Butterfield, and I went to a meeting that we had, remember it was recently, showing the plans to improve Butterfield with the loan in the waterworks. And then they had a chart showing the estimate of the cost, what it was worth to be each piece of property, and I was kind of all to find out that I did write the number down, that it would be roughly $4900 per whole lot, but my built work would be $200,000. And I just didn't quite understand why it's one piece of property smaller than most pieces of property, or I had one water service laying in, and I don't understand why it should be so much of a system, a piece of property.
Is that a fourplex you have there?
Fourplex. Right now, I have three single women and one child.
Okay. Craig, can you explain the dollar charge?
Who provided you the assessment?
It was she that showed us the information.
The neighborhood meeting.
At the neighborhood meeting?
He did.
Yeah, it was in the packet. It was the estimate of the various properties' estimates. And she, I tried to explain to her to the best of my knowledge. I said I didn't have all the answers, but it's probably considered a commercial entity, and it's a four-unit situation rather than a single standalone unit.
I guess I have. I call it the assessment of feasibility. Your Butterfield Commons?
Yes.
I have an assessment of $10,868.
Okay, I show, I saw, show $23,000. What I show versus...
Do you own more than one of those properties? I don't see one.
No, I just have that.
I have it down as 148 feet of frage, $10,868 assessment.
Okay, so that didn't match up with what I showed with that meeting. I'm not sure if those guys were there.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know where that came from.
So is that usually a debt or that is an assessment?
Correct.
To the taxes or something?
Correct.
Okay. What you show the homes, is each house different or?
Yeah. Our house with the water is about $6,000.
That's really different than what we were told, that we can...
I'm not sure if I told you.
Really different.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But I think the last one there, that would be also...
Just to also let you know, that's a 15-year assessment, and the interest rate hasn't been calculated yet until we have the final numbers in through the bidding process, but that's over 15-year time span.
Well, I'm just saying when I'm here, it's $3,000 or so.
Oh, I haven't vacated the board. Absolutely. Anytime you have a question, bring it forward to us.
Yeah, it was the master sheet that we were going to unit or by footage. And I did say it was an estimate, but... No, no. It was one we were in Traver. We had a Butterfield, and, you know, and then she was right. I thought it wasn't the 20 range.
Yeah, maybe four times. Each house was 40.
Again, we didn't need to speak to Craig or we didn't need to talk about the rest of the facts. Figure the, our meantime of the, so I, like I said, I could be, I was corrected, so. I could find that sheet that I had though.
Sure, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe it was a mistake.
It's possible, but, again, I didn't mean to mislead you in any fashion or frighten you in any way. I was just trying to share the figures because the questions didn't come out more than just one person except for yourself.
Right.
And so, well, Craig's got the clarification, but he didn't here put the figures together, so I stand corrected. I apologize.
So it goes by the frage?
Correct.
Okay.
Eight years is $3,000 of that extra district service. You'll get a six-inch service versus a house that just get a one-inch service.
Okay.
But there will be a hearing on the actual assessment.
Yeah, I understand.
Coming.
Yeah, but there's a cost.
Thank you for raising our attention. Anytime you have a question, I'll see you calling council.
Yes.
That's what we're here for.
So.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Special business, St. Francis Elementary PTA.
Hello, thank you for having me here. I'm going to ask you, I think someone recommended your packet. My name is Melissa Pierce. I am a parent of a second grader at St. Francis Elementary. Lived in Oak Grove for about 10 years, and I just thank you for having us. Thank you. Superintendent, you're doing very well. A little bit about me, I worked at U.S. Inteentown for about six years and good after having my second child. I'm now an active member of the APC. Also, a co-scouted leader here in St. Francis for Act 3511, and also volunteer major choice month with the RBC. So, I am here as part of the APC we are looking at replacing the playground that is sitting at St. Francis Elementary. It's been there about 20 years. Actually, it's been there exactly 10 years. The cost for a place that you may have seen where featured in the Carol Lemon news article last week is $150,000. To date, just so you're aware, we have raised $80,000 of that. The reasons we're doing this replacement is if you've seen it up close, you've seen the, there's a lot of disrepair happening on that playground. It's just a matter of time before it is completely inaccessible. There are two areas that are already blocked off to students. They're not actually allowed to play on them. They're pulled off of the right orange cones. Additionally, the current playground as a SIP is not overly accessible. Everything's split up high. We'd like to do a lot more accessibility for our students who may not be able to climb or have interest in doing that. And the growth of St. Francis has put a lot more, there's a lot of kids on that playground that have lost 20 years. So, our limitations of funding, we're a title school. St. Francis has been extremely supportive. The community has rallied around this project, especially over the last two weeks. We've done a fundraiser. I don't know if you've noticed, we've had some Facebook articles that have really just shown that the community is behind us, but we have hit these parents many times over the last two and a half years. So now we're reaching out to local businesses. We're seeing a lot of support from them and also to our cities. Obviously, we're convincing St. Francis City because kids in our school, 50% of them come from St. Francis City, so. We also plan to hit our big three, which are Oak Grove, High Sandy, and then Oak Grove. But St. Francis is really going to be the leader in our success on that. We also are meeting Chamber, the St. Francis Chambers, considering our proposal, as well as other local businesses. But we are hopeful that we made your support since this park will sit in the center of St. Francis, essentially paid for by the people of this area, and so we're hoping a small investment from the city can show some support. We actually have an article from 20 years ago showing that St. Francis City actually did contribute to our playground 20 years ago, if you're interested. We'll do a little tiny article on it. Basically, what we're here for is a couple of things. One, we'd like to request that a donation from the city of St. Francis. We believe that since this is going to sit in St. Francis, it is open to the public after hours and all summer to all residents of the area. We believe it would be a positive thing for the community. We see a lot of community support. We think the constituents behind it. Secondly, so in addition to funding, I think I mentioned to Joe, we'd like to request about $5,000 from the city. Additionally, if you're aware of other businesses that are, you yourselves are interested in donating, we obviously would be open to that. Like I said, I'm, we're grateful to be here. We are hopeful to work with you on this. We see a lot of support from the community. But I'd like to answer any questions you may have, and I have scripted a piece here as well, if you have any questions for her.
Well, one question that I have is, with the elementary construction, elementary school construction, did you lose some of this park or?
No.
You didn't? And through this $80 million bond, the school district never considered this part of it at all? This went indoors and not outdoors, from what I get?
Yes. It is very typical. I've talked about with most schools, it's very typical that districts actually don't pay for playgrounds. Chalky, Land O' Lakes, Seago, even up north, it's very common that a bond is initially passed to build a building with the initial playground, but PTOs and principals typically fundraise for subsequent playgrounds. It's actually very common. I would say, actually, every school that I spoke with, that's actually the case. Our district, obviously, would pay for it if they have the funding, but of that $80 million, if you'll remember, it was $120,000 to begin with, and it was a little scaled down, so.
She's doing a great, she's doing a really great job.
If we can tie it in somehow to Saint Pete, and that's why our contribution is going to be the peat rock that goes underneath, and then the overlay is special, you've got to have a certain amount of things, and then we will cover the insurance on the liability that goes along with the playground. But bonds cannot include things like playgrounds, and that's why I don't own any school that pays for a playground. What we are committed to is recess time for our kids and physical education teachers. We really feel strongly that true physical education is the best thing we can get our kids. We love to have a playground, and we love a parent office, and we love a community that supports us as much, but if you were to try to put that on a bond, you really can't do that. It's more of a building of structures. You can sometimes get away with some perimeter, like safety type things, like say you had to go up a fence. Let's say that road got completely busy between Trinity and Almetter. You could probably argue some of those things in a bond, but a playground, and I talked about any, my superintendent distribution lesson, I would find any school that had a bond at a playground.
Well, actually, speaking as a resident, because the council has no control over the rest of the school district, but as a resident, I would find that a park would be more receptive to me voting yes on a bond than not on a bond.
Exactly. And I could argue the same exact thing. It's a feel-good thing. There's no one that doesn't use it. Because even a seventh grade baseball team playing down in the corner, everyone kind of hangs out at a playground, and it's a very good thing for a school to have. So I agree with you. It would help, like, in a bond to go through if you could add something like that.
All right, I think, you know, I was going to say to you, let me pass enough of questions first from council here, and then we can go on. Kevin, you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you for coming, Superintendent. Football, track, tennis, baseball. Is the school, is that their responsibility for any of those enhancements, whether it be the announcer's booth down to the track, down to the goalpost, all that stuff, is that covered under school funding, and has any bond money been spent on that in the past?
I'm not aware, nothing on the current bond. Some of our outside things for ADA compliance outside the track is, you go past the concession stand, it's that big dip area, that's being fixed. I kind of inherited this bond project, so I don't know all the answers. Things like the tennis courts are used by every one of the community. They've got a lot of divots and things in them right now. We are not using any bond money for that. We're just going to try and use them up as much as we can and get those fixed later. The track is in due for resurfacing right now, but the answer to that is yes, those items, believe it or not, people can put up those big, huge field houses you see. They're enormous, and they cost lots and lots of money. We could put up a huge auditorium, for example, because it supports the fine arts. It just gets to be these weird outside things. You can't buy sculpture. You can't buy benches. That's so long, you know, some people could argue that keeps kids out of the street, that they have a nice place to sit, you know, this kind of thing. It just gets really glitchy. But sports and fine arts can be included in there. And some of it is, I have to get back to you now, Zach's, right now, I'm just trying to get through East Buffalo in the first year of this project, because it's been quite something.
Sure. I just find it interesting, and again, you and I don't make the rules, of course, but in tax, like I say, bonds, they can do enhancements like that, but it's a physical activity where the same school, and it can't be spent on a recreational thing like this. I mean, sports, football, tennis, all that other stuff, and the arts, of course. Why is it, why some of this wasn't taken into consideration is interesting to me, but thank you.
I want some part of that process that I, you know, they covered it.
Right, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I, for me, I'm not in favor of contributing myself. I think, I would think there would be a lot of the bond for whatever reason. If it's not, it's not. What about an operating levy?
You could use levy money for that. I think that would be also a really hard sell. That was for learning, bonds for buildings, you know, you can't put it in a money. You're right. I don't know what my board is going to decide to do on that.
Right. I mean, I think from the little that I have, and that has involved, I have played, whether it was previously with the last bond in the past, but I think, too, if it's up to the voters to vote for that levy to possibly include it in that levy and let the voters decide themselves. That's just my take on it.
What if they voted against the levy though, because you added something like a playground? I mean, we would be short, you know, everything that we need just for more. I need curriculum, I need technology, and I mean, no disrespect, because this is a wonderful parent. Playground's about the lowest thing on my priority list right now, and I don't think that is respectful at all. I, as a superintendent, I have a hard time with not levy. I need that to be for exact things that we really need, and I need to go to every single voter and say why I need it.
Right.
To me, this is a luxury plus item, but it does accentuate a community, and it does accentuate our school, and it does, you know, especially with the baseball fields there, it does have a purpose. I can respect you saying no.
I think the hard part for me is, too, is the being guardian of this money. You're asking an individual city when we have an entire district as well, and I have no idea what their cities are going to say or whatever, but to give our taxpayer dollars to something, it's not quite a private deal as a public, so it's, I kind of get the relation there, but at the same time, like there is, for instance, the Alexander House would come forward. I oppose support their causes, but I think something like that, a private organization or a charity of any sort, you know, whether it be a church or whatever, to me, it's more of a private donation where I'd encourage you to continue to get business support, get people's support, but whether or not, I think more, for me, it would be going door to door and asking those individuals that, which I get a lot of work and hard if we do a campaign. That's always one, so. That is my opinion, so. I have due respect to coming forward and speaking publicly and all that stuff, too.
Russ? You adopted the $80 million bond, and this school, ISD-15, is bleeding with enrollment. And $80 million to build more schools is not going to stop failing enrollment. A levy would, and ISD-15, the board before you, pushed $80 million down our taxpayers' throats to pay for something that's not fixed. A levy for learning would have fixed and stopped that bleeding. I agree with Joe Newbauer, this is a private thing. I don't know if our parks, the parking can donate off the books, but not through the city council? I don't know, because it is a park and it is a community. I don't know. That's just a question on my end, but it's hard for me to ask taxpayers to pay for an individual donation because all it's going to do is open up the doors for a lot more people to come in here and ask for money. And you did it for, you know, the school, you should do it for us, and I just can't see myself doing it.
I understand that. There are a couple, I'll just interject, the bond is not pushing out of the money that's worth paper up, especially here. Additionally, I do think that, to your point, you open a levy, right? When you start to allow, you know, we're going to get some here, some here. How do you then decide when you open it up to nonprofits? I think that's definitely a policy decision for your whole council. However, in this case, I do believe that the city benefits because it's not just a donation someone will receive. You receive an entire grand new park that doesn't have all the systems in the community, which are actually already paying through fundraising to the school. Individual parents are writing checks, they're putting in coins in jars. I understand your citizens are already paying for this, and they are behind it, but I do understand your point, but at the same time, there is a return here that is a public park that essentially the city of St. Francis will receive basically for free on the backs of the association of parents and teachers, which are not people, which are submitting hundreds of grants. You know, in our area, many hands have to make like work on this property that we're not doing. And we've normally grabbed these citizens so many times, but...
She and I are, I will say, I'm going to call this the queen of grant writing, because that's what we need to do in today's world. And unfortunately, our population just doesn't give us enough of that, what they call the free and reduced population. It is unfair to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if I was in a different district and my poverty level was higher, this playground would be paid for through grants. Both she and I would have a grant written already to pay for this. It is unfortunate, and I don't know how I feel about this, but it's just, it's really unfortunate that just because our poverty level is not high enough. And we're encouraging parents at all times to fill out the forms to try to get our population of that up because it's your federal funding, and more than anything, it allows you to write grants. Every single grant I've written gets rejected because we don't have enough, and it's called the free and reduced population. We just aren't there. We're currently at around 21, you know, the range. We were at 27, but we had parents that haven't refilled up the form this year. We'll get them back in. Where that population, when Minneapolis is at 82%, they would write this grant, and they would have this already being...
Yeah, but they're 8,000, and their population is over, well over half a million, if not more.
But I'm just saying, those are examples of, I wish we could do more and didn't have to complete it.
But I'm just saying, those are examples of, I wish we could do more and didn't have to complete. I haven't even met most of you, several of you I have, but some of you I haven't. And here I am, you know, supporting an ABT that's trying to do good things, but we need to have conversations about relationships and and the great things that our community, you guys are doing some amazing things, which this isn't the first thing that you're leading me on either. Um, I just, I wanted to point that out, that she and I would be writing lots of grants. I have, you have, and we're denying not all of that, we just don't have that population.
We are, we are planning to meet, we have meetings scheduled with representatives for a doubt to discuss exactly who is responsible for this. Does it really fall to a parent to really fundraise or plan, it just doesn't seem to make sense. Um, there are other states that have other programs in place that offer grants. And so just the idea of educating, you know, do do people have to know that this is, that this is a problem? That when it comes to replacement, who pays for it? You know, so we have conversations that are coming up, but again, the exist, this is a ten-year process of discussion. The existing playground will have to be reworked.
Sure.
This is really tough for me, because I have poured my heart and soul into the school district for the last seven years. Um, I have worked tirelessly on the bond. I was, I was a support of the second one, not the first one. Once we got some language worked out in the second one, I, I was probably at almost as many meetings as superintendent, former superintendent trying to present was. And, um, I want, I want to help the district. I wanna see the city and the district apartment together on so many levels and so much more. Um, but with talking to some of the constituents that I respect and trust, um, it's, it's opening up a slippery slope for us, and that's really hard for me, because I really want to give these kids, I mean, I think we're striving very hard to give them a really good education. And I want to give them this playground. I wish I could write over the check and just give it to you, because that would be so much easier. For everybody. So, um, I just, I'm just really worried that we're going to have a floodgate of people coming in. And I don't know how I can justify giving one group something and not. Um, when in the past, the council did give to Alexander House, I, again, I had to use a wooden shelf, and I had to leave an abusive relationship. I valued those places huge, but I didn't feel it was the city's place to give them money. Um, and it's available for anybody to use that needs it, so. I would like to see ways that, and the man I talked a little bit, we'd like to kind of figure a way that we can help in some way. Um, I'm not sure what that looks like right now. But, um, as far as being able to give a donation at this point, I just don't think I can do that.
Thank you, Rob.
Well, I'm still here to talk to her, so.
Mayor, can I ask one question? Yeah, there you go. Just briefly, who pays for the upkeep after this, if you achieve your goal or at least part of your goal? First, I guess first of all, how did it get in this addition over the years and years and years of neglect? Whose responsibility was it to keep it up? And then if you are to achieve your goal partially or the whole goal, who keeps it up? Whose responsibility financially is it to keep it up and not end it in this situation again?
Great question.
Thank you, Mayor.
And my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, that Association of Parents Teachers has an account specific to a playground, which, for example, a slide replaced point five thousand dollars, right? So that has come up to us multiple times, and we have kind of band-aided it over several years. And now it's to the point where refurbishment is as much as a new one. And so we're at the point where we either have to sell the old car or buy a new one. Uh, but the, our group is responsible for purchasing typically the equipment, and then the district itself then comes in and solves that and carries the insurance on them.
See, that's the interesting part. They have, they're, they're a party to the act of the fact, but then you still, you need to put the foundation back in there, um, where they should have, they should have had some responsibility over the years. And again, anyone here was not part of that earlier group of people that made those decisions, but.
And again, this is very typical. It's very disconcerting to learn it.
The process is weird. The football boosters put up this amazing shed, and we're like, oh, thank goodness, because we can put all the equipment in there and all of that, but we have to keep up the the shed, and we have to make sure it's locked, and we have to weave around with it, and all those things. It's just funny that once the item is there.
They need to ownership.
Yeah, and we have people move things in that we did want. People donating things like treadmills and those things that were like, we can't take used treadmills, you know, those kinds of things. But we are committed to that. I am actually quite impressed that this product, looking back at when you bought it twenty years ago, was not meant to last twenty years. It just wasn't designed for that. The new design methods are, I mean, prototypes are, they, we don't double the years, who knows? But, um, the warranty on this one went way past what it should have been used for. So obviously, and I can't take any credit for that, but it was actually really well taken care of to last twenty years. They weren't made like they are now. If you go back and look at it, it's kind of that old steel. We have some that's curled up, and the rain kind of has just gotten out of it after a while.
Has athletic boosters offered any, um, participation in this program at all? Considering it is the athletic youth that will be using this type of product and then mentoring the programs at a later time. The boosters are usually not in too much trouble. Actually, my kids both went through the full from kindergarten through high school, so I don't know what was.
I'll let them throw a list of contact lines and finish them and support them, but we've not contacted them.
And they always are.
Yeah. But I will absolutely comment on that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Well, here's an idea that I had a discussion with Sarah, as you mentioned. And I've also talked to Joe, who hopefully has, I know, has talked to John, our liquor store manager. Um, I think a way this could be done, and I open this for discussion, John, so I must see how it can be done, but I'd like, if we could do a promotion running timeframe through our liquor muni, where a purchase in there would donate so much money to this cause. Um, I think it could, could appease everybody, giving you some of what you want and not allowing us, allowing us to open up a can of worms, um, and not take tax dollars, because it's off a purchase. So in other words, buy a case of beer, we contribute a dollar towards, towards this, you know, this fund. Let this run, run thirty days or forty-five days, whatever it may be, John, whatever we can work out. This is, I'm just bringing up an idea, how it can be tweaked or whatever. It seems to be a situation where, again, it's, it's, it's supporting it, but in a way that doesn't help us up to have someone else come and say, we did it for them, now you gotta do it for us, kind of thing like this. Um, I speak now as a resident and not as a mayor here. Um, and I'm wishing you the best with your, your, your being a superintendent in this district. I think you're a bright light in a, in a dark room, and I hope that you can brighten it up fully, LED-wise or whatever, to bring some attention to a board who in the past has not spent money wisely. And that's one of the things you get when you had a first bond that failed to a second bond, and now coming back with a levy coming up and that. People in this city work hard for their money, as everyone does, but they need to know that you're spending the money wiser. When we took over the council three years ago, one of the things we instituted here was not just pulling a bond for bond sake, to give us what we wanted and not what we need. So we held back that, we've become strong but straightly measured, because the dollars we spend a day, we do get a return on. Plow trucks that are good for twenty years now, things like that. We look at the dollars and see what kind of return are we gonna get on that dollar we're spending? In other words, are we just putting it into a balance bit, or are we gonna get some return that benefits the city at large? So I'm hoping, uh, as again, as a resident, that I'll see that in the future. And you are one bright light, I hope, can convince them, the seven-man board, to see the light, I hope.
I'm really, really excited. There, I think a fresh set of eyes are exactly what was needed. I, I'm really excited about the future of this district. And if you follow anything that's going on, there's so much good things going on in the community and the school. And I'm so excited, and Joe and I had just a great meeting and had a lot of, a lot of working meetings and stuff with chief as well. This room is filled with amazing potential, and I'm just so excited. So thank you for saying those things, because I, I just think there's so much possibility for this town and East Buffalo and Buffalo, and all of the areas. I just think there's so many possibilities.
But I just wanna mention, as Kevin brought up about the maintenance of the park, and that, uh, one of the samples I will give you is that Learning Center on Bridge Street has been for sale now three years. Um, I talked many times with the former superintendent to take care of the landscaping around it and take care of the building, so that you have a building that looks like at least has some care to it through the sale process. Um, I called and called and called and begged, finally got it taken care of at one point last, I think it was last year or the year before, and then it came back, the, the landscaping was covering the windows and everything. And I just, what I'm saying to you is, is, um, uh, to get what you want for that building, you have to, you have to price rate to move it, you have to also maintain it.
I wish it was our building back.
I know, I know, it's just, and that really would have come to, to my conclusion, is you have nineteen people you have to deal with, and that's, that's, you know, that's a difficult situation, I understand.
You can notice from October on, it looks really nice, because I agree with you. I'm kind of one of those where I wanna drive by, and even if it's an open storefront, let's make it look nice. And so, thank you Michelle Anderson for agreeing with me. Um, we committed some more staff to go over on a weekly basis, so from October on, I hope you realize what that is really is. We need to shovel it now, um, just in case someone wants to walk through. They never know.
I mean, the stolen property has to look like you want, you know, it's worth buying. And my, and Michelle has the patience of a saint.
Yeah, yeah, she does.
But going on with that anyways, beyond that, I just wanna say as a resident. Anyway, um, I will say to you, John, and some input from John and Joe here, and get the council's feedback. But I'm thinking, um, if we can do a promotion like that, I think will benefit, I think people would be receptive to giving. Um, and I think that, uh, again, it puts us in a situation where we're not committing tax dollars, um, and, and we're not opening up again a can of worms. John, is that, is that doable, that possible in a way here that we can make this work through a vendor, um, through a supplier of some sort or whatever? Can it be done or not?
I don't think, um, going through somebody, but I believe that we would be able to, that Joe, uh, the firefighter donation, uh, how he took a dollar out of every case, we sold a Coors Light, Coors and Coors Lights, and gave that to them, if we could do, I think we could do something like that.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, I'd leave it to you, to what I just wanna put it on. Um, the council, I opened again for discussion here in a minute with council. Um, but I think that it is receptive, because again, it's a public company, and maybe a choice at the time they make a purchase. Um, so you're not going into their pockets unless they wanna give. So it opens up, and I, I would, I would really hope to believe, um, that you get a good response, because it's for the children and the community, and that way it kind of appeases everybody.
That's a fair suggestion. I appreciate you willing to entertain that, so I'll just follow up.
So let me, let me turn it over just to, uh, Joe, at least.
What would you think about, you know, John identified some products and we determined some type of an amount? Um, for some, determine the amount of time based on projections, and maybe not to exceed a certain dollar amount. And then maybe, once we hit that dollar amount, we can donate it to the parent teachers association.
I would also ask, though, if you're gonna pick a certain, why you pick a certain product? You just have the option to donate, or?
I mean, John, can you, can you do it?
Better word. Well, I mean, people obviously, if they're gonna buy the product, and a portion of that product's gonna go there.
Would it, would it be bad? Well, let, let's, let's just go on this, and this is again, we're discussing this, but what if, like, for a thirty-day period, every item that was purchased in the store contributed a quarter or fifty cents or something like that from the purchase to this? For a thirty-day period, and then if you wanna put a dollar amount on it, whatever, I mean, whatever. I'm saying then you have more volume to get off of it, you're not charging a dollar for just one item, and, and, you know, limiting it to one item. Is that possible? Is that doable?
I mean, I, I think it would be doable. I, I, I mean, we would have to, we'd have to talk about it, right?
I think, I think the main question is, what, what would the city be willing to donate? And then, John, I think he can come up with some type of plan to work into that number. So whatever the end number is, if you want it to be, uh, let's say they're asking for five thousand, if that's the number, and we can find a way to get to five thousand, if you wanted to make it an open-ended thing and just however much it ended up being through a certain time period, we can do something like that, too. I mean, there's all kinds of options, and it's just, uh, the council has to kind of determine where the amount we're trying to get to.
Okay, well, as I read this article, let me pass it back to you, let me go through the article. Oh, I'm sorry. As I read the article, um, twenty years ago, we contributed twenty-five hundred, I take it, okay? So what if we use that number again, and then do it through this promotion? I think the odds of getting that amount are doable, I, I believe. Um, like I say, again, I mean, why don't you put kids' faces to a poster, and you have it there, and people go in? It's nothing for them to buy something, and then, like I say, again, we take a quarter or fifty cents off of that purchase price and put it towards this. I think in a thirty-day period, or even if we go a forty-five-day period, by the time spring comes, you could have that amount of money.
That would be my guess, anyways.
I'll leave it, I wanna discuss this with council and see, I don't wanna overstep my bounds, it's just a thought I had come up with. Um, to try to not say flat, like, we're not gonna do nothing. I don't like that, especially when it comes to kids and that, so. You know, San Francisco doesn't have a lot of outdoor activities. Um, winter time is the ice rink, which we maintain, uh, but really, we don't have a lot of outdoor activities. And so, um, I don't, I don't like to see the kids have to go to other cities to do what they should be able to do here. You know, I think, that's just my opinion. So, um, Sarah, let me turn it over to you and see what she says.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, I know, what I was hoping for is that we could some way show our support without opening that, that can where. Although, if it's got people to our meetings, maybe, that's understandable. Um, but, you know, I'd, I'd like to see a way that we can partner, and if this works out great, otherwise, I would really like to explore, keep exploring. I don't want, I'm invested in our district, and I spend lots of hours working with you guys, so could really like to pay for it.
Okay, Rob, let me, you know.
Um, I really like the idea. I, I would like to see it more streamlined. Um, let's say, for an example, ten dollars of every hundred dollars purchased throughout the, uh, that's a good way to. You know, whatever that percentage is, and leave it open-ended. Put it on everyone's Facebook page, put it out there, hit the liquor muni, we're building a park. Is that, we could get fifty thousand dollars. I go there now, I can make it happen. Let the community support it, you know, I, I, I wouldn't wanna hold it down to twenty-five hundred dollars and say, hey, we're doing, you know, that's our, our contribution. Let's let the representatives of our, of our city support it. Let's go it out on the school pages, the, the city pages, everywhere, whatever John deems, uh, that's the easiest. You know, when you put on a piece of product and you're trying to chase it around, and, you know, you run out of the product, because everyone wants to buy it, whatever that percentage is, ten dollars on every hundred dollars, whatever we make in the next thirty to forty-five days in the liquor muni, minus whatever that equals out, probably one percent. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, here's a hundred thousand dollars on our.
So I thought if we do this, we, we put a bottom on it, that the twenty-five hundred, we can, you know, prove it. So to make sure that we stay at twenty-five hundred, um, can we do something?
If you don't get to the twenty-five, just doubles that, if you don't get to the twenty-five, you're coming back to the council and say, hey, we were to promise twenty-five hundred.
You're gonna weigh on the top.
We could, we could, the residents, the residents are gonna support this. So that, I, I wouldn't wanna put a, a bottom number on it, because they won't come and support it. And I don't know, which I think they would, but if they don't, then we're holding ourselves to a twenty-five hundred dollar mark.
I think what we should do is open up our timeframe in three to forty-five days. Um, not limited to one item, you know, just one, like one course, because you don't want everybody buying Coors.
Right, you're running out of product.
Running out of product. So if you, if you open it up to the general product line, you're more apt to get more people to give, because there's more, they're buying, whether they're buying wine, they're buying liquor, or they're buying beer, they're buying some.
Yep, they're buying whatever they want.
Seltzers out there, whatever they're buying.
And they're supporting the house.
Right, so, um, Joe, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm not a marketing specialist.
Well, that's why we have John.
I'd be, I mean, I'd be in favor of doing something along that, like, let's see what the logistics are, and whether or not we can open it, I mean, if, that's where I say if you have a box there or something that people wanna donate to, that they just put it in regardless when they come in, then you're, you're not holding them to a certain product. They're not getting it from a certain product, you're saying, oh, we're looking at, and that's not me.
Most people lose that card, they'll get seven dollars.
Yeah, you won't get a lot. You won't get a lot.
Three or four people.
So I own a product, I guess you got some better way, or multiple product, whatever, it's just, I guess I, I'd like to understand logistics more. You want to agree to something.
Right, but this way, you actually get somebody that instead of buying one bottle of wine, might go, I'll buy two bottles of wine, because I wanna contribute, you know what I mean? So they come out with two bottles of wine, and they gave a contribution.
I, I almost before leaving, I opened it up long, but I understand the logistics of whatever that promotion is.
Right, I understand, so.
I remember this, it's going on for a long time. You have plenty of time, maybe you have some committees, I'm not sure, but this isn't quite something we need right now. You know, this is something that you could take your time, because I think all decisions are better if you don't make a rash on. You know, that's some of the points of Joe's making, and good points, Rob makes some good points, we need to, you know.
Every step you take forward, take two back.
Right, yeah, so just, you know, do whatever fits good for you, I think is great.
Kevin, what can you add?
I, uh, I like that idea. I like the, the fact that part, that part of the sponsorship is they'd be a partner, which we are, we would be your partner. I like the twenty-five hundred dollar ceiling, and I think we should let it run, let John pick the product. But we have seven months, which will incorporate two holidays, which are big liquor days, Memorial Day and July fourth. So that's six-month window. This is a marathon, not a sprint. So I agree with the twenty-five, I'd say give a six-month run, and then there's a cutoff at the end of, after the Fourth of July. And, uh, I think we'll easily hit the twenty-five, and John could pick a different product where every month it applies. month it applies to and go from there. And then we've done our part and contributed.
Well, I like that idea too, so there's many ideas we could do, so I think that if we can agree to let John and Joe work up the promotion part of it, the timeframe, you're not much to this, obviously, so a three- to six-month period would be within the realm of reality. And then, like I say, again, it's up to, this way you're letting the public donate in a way that they're not pulling out their pocket immediately, it's through their purchase. So they get something, and you get something, and the council is participating without a full commitment to prevent, so to help us out down the road.
That's great, I'm grateful for the idea, and then it was, we all just managed to follow up with each gentleman here and with any details of logistics. We appreciate your support and hearing it out, and just grateful for the support from the community.
And we appreciate you going forward.
One extra thing is, I'm gonna be working with the realtors in town, and we're gonna start marketing, we want people moving to this community, and some of the things I think we don't showcase enough is our amazing school. We have open gym on Sundays, people don't even know about it, and those, teen members can come into the school, they can use our facilities, the track, if you go up there in the morning, people are walking on the track all the time, everyone's really respectful of the gym classes, get out there, they step off the track, they have school time. We're gonna leave those tennis courts open until the kids get their state boards, and I don't know how we close it down then, but, you know, we really want to showcase this town, you want to move here because of the amazing things we have here, and part of that is parks, and part of that is tennis courts, you know, some cities build pickleball courts that are miles long, those kinds of things. We're gonna start showcasing our talent, our city, and I think as a school is a part of that, because we don't do enough of that. We're not talking about the good things, sometimes we talk about roundabouts too much, and we don't talk about the great things, you know, I mean, it's just the truth. And so that's gonna be part of something I'm moving forward, just working with realtors and letting them know why it's cool to live here.
Have you met Kate?
What's that?
I would agree with that, because as Joe and me have attended the city's luncheons, you know, we've had mayors get up and say that people who go online and look at three things that they focused on would be, you know, the school district, number one, parks and trails, number two, and the amenities in the city of where they can go to purchase items or entertain themselves. So that's very big, I mean, but a reputation is the key to the school districts, and like I say, again, I'm hoping that you are the light in that dark room to open us up to that board, to make them understand, it's just not a name change from ISD 15 to San Francisco City Schools that makes the difference. It's your curriculum, it's what you do, how you make people want to come here, because I've seen people with leaders go to Ramsey, go to other areas, I know your enrollment was up at one period where their enrollment was closed, that didn't make me feel that confident because it was lack of competition, I'd rather see them come here because they really are gonna get something out of here and want to come here. That's your goal, that's what you have to do there. You're just one, and I gotta convince seven. We support that, we support that for the three years we've been here, going out as we grow, goes your student base, as people come in from your school, it goes our base, working together is how it works, but we've had a little bit of a slowness to that. So hopefully.
We're making progress every year, so I'm really excited to see what we can do.
See, and progress is a good sign.
And as parents separate from this, I also like to mess with, I actually applied for enrollment in two of the districts on either side, looked at foreign language schools, things like that, I did my research, right? And I chose San Francisco City Schools, because all the parents that talked about teachers, and it has been phenomenal. I am 100% happy here, and I completely support that, and super technique is amazing. So, aside from this, I'm a proud parent, not wearing my shirt, please. I love San Francisco.
As future school board member of that.
Uh. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming, and I'll be in touch, thank you for having us.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, let's see, we have, we have.
We have to go to the P T R. We're not leaving, we have to go back.
You'll watch it later.
All right, ordinance 257, second series, amended 6-8 pond broker second reading.
Mayor, council before you tonight is the second reading. Two weeks ago, we discussed the changes in the pond broker code to address the changes in the reporting and make it more flexible for whoever we are under a contract with. If that'll answer any questions.
Okay, you know, I, we've all discussed, discussed this, I know, a second reading, but just once again, I'm going to be 70 years old, and my mind might have forgotten something here, but on page 52 of the packet, 6-8-4 fees, where it says billable transaction fees, licenses, instead of shall, may pay. What you're doing, if I'm understanding this right, is you're letting them, you're acknowledging to them that they may be, depending on the city council and listing, whatever, you may be, may be, you may have to pay a fee.
Mayor, council, correct.
It's just offering, it leaves the door open, is what you're saying.
Correct, our fee schedule, our adopted fee schedule outlines any fees in this direction back to back.
Right, so instead of the word shall, which commits it, the may opens the door up and the decision comes from the council.
Correct.
Yes, that's all I really wanted to know. Okay, so, Joe?
I have nothing to add.
Hey, Kevin?
I have nothing to add.
Rob?
I have nothing to add.
Well, on that, it's an ordinance or a rule call, but do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 257, second series, the many 6-8 pond brokers second reading?
I'll be careful, sure.
Councilor Woodford makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Newbar makes that second, Doris will call.
Robinson.
Aye.
Neil Moore.
Aye.
Feldman.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Uffey. Aye. Baskett. Aye. Moving on to, Resolution 2020-03, summer publication of ordinance 257, second series.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, mayor, council before you, is the resolution, put the changes in the newspaper for the 30-day comment period.
Okay, I'll pass it on to Sarah, any discussion on this at all? Rob? No. Kevin?
No, sir.
No, it's pretty much, it's a format, pretty much just set first reading to the second reading, so do I have a, just a resolution, so it'll be just by vote, do I have a motion to adopt 2020-03, summer publication of ordinance 257, second series, have a motion? Have a motion. Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Newbar makes a second. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, okay. Moving on to, Ordnance 258, second series, amending city code 3-4, rules of regulation relating to individual onsite sewage treatment, second reading.
Mayor, council before you, is the second reading for our septic tanks, our sewage treatment. This is updates that were created from audit from the MPCA, plus some individual tweaking of our program, this is the second reading. I would be happy to answer any questions.
The only thing I have here about is that on page 67, where Amendment of the Fel State, we all agreed that the one, item one of section H would go from 10 months to six months, and item two would go from 24 months to six months. We are in all agreement of the six months, staff is two, by the way. Okay. On that, Rob, do you have anything to say?
Nope.
Okay, Joe? Kevin?
Nothing, sir.
Sarah? Okay, this once again is a verse for a rule call, by a motion to adopt ordinance 258, second series, amending city code 3-4, rules of regulation relating to individual onsite sewage treatment, second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
A second, mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes that second. Barb?
Neil Moore.
Aye.
Feldman.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Uffey. Aye. Robinson.
Aye.
Baskett.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the next one. So I'm going to go to, okay. Resolution 2020-04, summer publication of ordinance 258, second series.
Mayor, council, item D is the resolution, put the changes in the paper for the 30-day comment period. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, can I, this is pretty much from Sarah, any discussion?
No.
Rob?
Nope.
Joe?
No, sir.
Okay. This will be a vote, a note, a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-04, summer publication of ordinance 258, second series.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Woodford makes that motion, do I have a second?
A second, mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a second. Are any further discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item. Let's see, we are at 259, okay. Ordnance 259, second series, amending city code 8-3-6, keeping of bees, second reading.
Mayor, council before you tonight is the second reading for the keeping of bees, this lowers the parcel requirements to 2.25 acres, and includes some language in regards to nuisance or unattended or abandoned, this is our second reading, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm just gonna state on record here, I have discussed, you know, my desire to have registration, but council has not come along with that. Is council still in that thinking? No registrations, voluntary registration, under registration? Was voluntary, do you have it now, is voluntary?
Correct, mayor, council, I have a freedom voluntary at this point.
Right, but that.
As current regulations, it becomes an issue.
Right, so it becomes an issue, we have the nuisance ordinance to cover this or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I can pivot that, I guess, but, all right. Any discussions, Sarah?
No, other than I just encourage residents to register, so that we know you have bees, and if something happens, we can help you.
Rob?
I would just, if you leave what Sarah said, nothing to add.
Kevin?
Nothing, sir.
All right, the only reason, the only reason, I just want to put this out, the only reason I have for registration is, when you're dealing with hives, you're not dealing with the plant that has, as was mentioned here, and I'm not, you know, not knocking the, Kevin brought this up, but my wife has plants in front of our house, do we get bees there? Yes. Do I get 60,000 bees? No, hopefully not, I don't. But I do get bees, okay? So my concern, of course, is when you're having hives, you have queens, and queens drive, you know, have bees come, I mean, that's worker bees. The bees, the queens can last five years, the worker bees don't last near that long, okay? So when you're talking about hives that create thousands of bees in general in population versus flowers here, Mary, that don't have it. That's my concern, and that's why I like to see registration. So I would just caveat this by saying that it's voluntary right now, we have a nuisance ordinance, and I hope it don't go nowhere like the chickens did as far as problem, but I would say to, could it be, could it be, to make me feel a little better anyways, could the city at least make sure that they're aware that they're, that we are asking for registration, not demanding it, but asking for it? Could we at least do that when they come in?
Yes, mayor, council, we can put the form in our selection of permits, and we can also put it on the website.
And make them aware of it?
Yeah.
As they come in, so that they know about it?
Yes.
Would that be all right to council?
Sure.
Would that be all right? Because once again, my concern is, is thousands of bees. If I have 60,000 bees in front of my house, I'd be moving right away, I mean, or killing them off, so, I mean, but bees, you know, when you're doing this, you're generating animal, I want to make sure that they don't bite somebody or do something ridiculous, so, and I know, I know about nuisance ordinances, but still, it's a process that comes to us, it takes time. In the meantime, something can happen, and I want to be responsible, so, all right, if we can agree with that, there's no other further discussion than I can see on the second reading. This again will be an ordinance, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's ordinance 259, second series, amending city code 8-3-6, keeping of bees, second reading?
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Councilor Woodford makes a second. Barb?
Feldman.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Uffey. Aye. Robinson.
Aye.
Neil Moore.
Aye.
Baskett.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item here. What? Oh, okay. Motion to adopt tonight's resolution, 2020-05, summer publication of ordinance 259, second series. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion, mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Newbar makes a second. Are any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Just for the knowledge of the viewing audience, the reason why it's an ordinance, that there's an ordinance for a rule call, the resolution part is just to summary, you know, to not spend the time and dollars into making a full, bold publication, which is an easier process and faster, and saves some money and time. So that's why we're doing it like this. Not trying to backdoor anything, okay? Moving on to the next one. Ordnance 260, second series, amending city code 11-11-3, payment for installation of improvements, second reading.
Mayor, council before you, is the rework of the language for the securities that are required for infrastructure work with our developments, this leaves it flexible for us to negotiate with developers, and puts it in the development agreement, which council would then approve at that time. I, this is the second reading, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Okay, well, once again, just so I air this out, because you stated something here where we leave it up to flexibility and with the council's, you know, decision, but I just want to ask one thing here. If a developer comes here, as Kevin brought up in the last meeting, sees that 150, whatever, once he gets his project through the motion, all that, you're here, you'll be making them aware that if they were to come back, that there is a flexibility to the situation, right? I mean, so that they don't, what I'm afraid of is that if they think it's a black and white 150, they're not going to pursue it any farther. I would hope that they go through the process, they pursue it, and if there's a question mark to the process, they understand that we are workable within reason.
Correct.
Okay, I guess I can leave it that one, too. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt tonight's, any discussion on that at all? I'll ask that, Kevin?
No, sir.
Joe?
No.
No.
Okay. Was this my answer? Okay. So, a motion to adopt tonight's ordinance 260, second series, amending city code 11-11-3, payment for installation of improvements, second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Newbar makes a second. Barb?
Bauer.
Aye.
Uffey. Aye. Robinson.
Aye.
Neil Moore.
Aye.
Feldman.[1592.12]
All right, moving on to the next item, um, which will be, resolution 2020-06, summer publication of ordinance 260, second series.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right, you're gonna ask one, but thank you. I'm sorry, all right? All right, yes, first, uh, first motion by Council Newbar, second by Council Woodford Bauer. Pardon any further discussion, I'll favor state. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, um, ordinance 261, second series amended city code 7-3-6, recreational motor vehicles, second reading.
Mayor, council of Torrey is the second reading to address the issues in regards to racetracks and expedition driving. This puts in place the definitions and then also creates a lot limit size of 2.5 acres, defines our setbacks and our driving expectations. Being that this is the second reading, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And that's 50 foot setback on carby land and structure, right?
Correct.
Todd, I will ask you, um, is the language, but you agree with the language?
Yeah.
Okay, and in the future, should a problem arise, you know, have some recourse? All right. Any discussion, Sarah?
No.
Rob?
No.
Joe?
Kevin? I do. Um, I hate to wrap the whole here, but, um, originally when we spoke of this and other communities have dealt with this also, um, should there, I guess, I'm asking the council's opinion, noise and or dirt, we talked a little bit about, or I guess we didn't talk enough about, OEM mufflers, um, original equipment existing on some of the vehicles, if the, if a person meets all these parameters, that's all well and good, but again, if they have extra mufflers or a performance type apparatuses that have changed the exhaust noise, also dirt, uh, just, in the past community, in the past communities have had, uh, these, this type of language added to their, um, ordinances, and I'm just wondering what your thoughts, process is, if you don't think it's necessary? I, I think the noise part is important. If you have a modified vehicle out there and you've met all the requirements, it's gonna be an awful lot more of a nuisance than, uh, than an OEM or an original, uh, equipment muffler on some of these. I mean, you have a 50cc scooter bike out there with Little Billy on there or Sally, and that thing can scream like a banshee and because the exhaust and stuff has been modified, so I think we're leaving ourselves maybe a little bit of a crack in the door there if we don't mention noise specifically and or dirt, so that's...
So still to be thrown here.
Exhaust, okay. Uh, the noise portion then, again, I'm just making sure our bases are covered. I know other communities have adopted that and that language was in theirs and it seemed to tighten things up, so we're here to make a difference for the community and that's all I got.
Kate, what's your, what do you think?
David, Joe, if we modify this, do we bring it back for a second reading?
Uh, I guess we would.
Okay, so we could go back and look at additional language, um, the dirt we try to capture under erosion?
Yeah.
So, and I think with noise, we do capture some of that under noise ordinances, but if you'd like to see a tighter language on those?
If you don't think it's worthwhile and, and your research shows otherwise, I'm good with that as well, but I thought I'd throw it out there because I didn't...
In the same order, it's all the conduct ordinance that address noise, especially the docked ones.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if that's...
Well, well, will this alleviate a gray area, what he's talking about, or not? Or do we have a break here?
I think what would come into play is several ordinances would kick in, we wouldn't probably use this ordinance maybe to address, like, if it was erosion, we'd be jumping to the erosion, if it's noise, we're jumping to disorderly conduct or, or, so it could be that a situation would require multiple languages or multiple ordinances if the language isn't specific in here.
So we do have a check and balance in place, would you say? Or is it worth it now to put the language in to prevent a gray area coming back to bite us later on?
It may be worth looking at it and coming back in two weeks for a second reading.
Do you agree? No, I mean...
We wanna do it right the first time.
I agree with you, because otherwise I had to come back and you never know if you're gonna need it.
Well, at least if an officer does go to, arrive and complain, you can look at the vehicle and see if it's been maltered or not, just like a motor vehicle you, your officer see on the street now, a big 4L drive truck with Monster Cherry Bombs on there, stacks, and it's like, holy cow. I mean, it's, it's another, it's another box to check anyway, just with, uh...
Right, and, and like I say again, it would be better to have the language in place and not need it than need it not to have it and create a, 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 a problem for the police officer going out there. And, and, you know, what I'm dead set against is, you know, not being able to do something when called and you're passing a neighbor, that can go on for once or twice, but after numerous calls, then the public says, well, what does it call? You know, they can't do nothing anyway, and they were just stuck there, and they reflect upon us as the council and staff, so, um, I'm all for doing it right the first time, so I just wanna say that also, our next council meeting is in two weeks, on the 17th, so it's not as though, it can be done by then, right? So it's not as though, it's still the winter time, you know, we're not worried about the tracks being revealed right now.
Frankly, I'm kind of...
Oh, yeah, okay. Excuse me. All right.
Do you have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue. Motion to continue, that would be for both items, right? Or what, do we need to change visual?
I can change.
Okay. So do I have a motion, um, and thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up. Uh, best now or then later, okay? So, um, do I have a motion to table ordinance 261?
Continue. Motion to continue.
Oh, the continue? Okay, that's the, motion to continue, ordinance 261, second series amended city code 7-3-6, recreational motor vehicles, second reading.
I'll make that motion here.
All right, Council Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Council Bauer makes a second. Is that a whole call or just a roll?
Uh, no, that's just gonna be a roll.
Okay, well then, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then do I have a motion to continue resolution 2020-07, summer publication of ordinance 261, second series?
Make that motion, Mayor.
Council Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Council Newbar makes a second. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now, moving on to the next item, um, let's see, I move on to, which is, uh, resolution 2020-07, okay, I know that's not... And Kate, approval of plans and spec for the 2020 street reconstruction and water main improvement, resolution 2020-08.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Approval of this item, remove this project down to the bid phase. This project includes Butterfield Drive, the River Shores neighborhood and Rum River Water Main Loop. I think everyone's fairly familiar with these improvements we're proposing, you've gone over it a number of times. Several things that did come up at the neighborhood meeting on the 23rd that are not in the plans. Basically, I highlighted three items, one being someone requested streetlights on Butterfield. There was some discussion about tree replacement for those that are being taken. And then the third item was road width on Butterfield Drive. One individual in particular wanted a minimum road width, no parking on any sides of the street. I think the consensus from the people that were there, they did like parking on one side, I guess that's what I heard, but anyways, those three items currently are not reflected in the plans, um, in your packet. Again, this project will be partially assessed. The funds that we will use to finance the project include the state aid fund, the water fund and the stormwater fund. With that, I will take any questions.
So now, now, Craig, is this, is this the addition that we did to the agenda or is that the next item?
That's the next item. So while we're talking about pearl architecture, next one...
Okay, so then you go after, okay, the parking restriction is different than mess on the addition, so the addition's gonna be under pearl, you say?
Yeah, correct. Directly, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a end.
I just don't wanna, just be, miss it. All right, um, I don't have any questions on this myself, so Kevin?
I do have a question, and again, I wanna just state for the record and for the audience that I did not mean to mislead that, uh, young lady who was here earlier concerning her property, um, I, I, the table disappeared off my archives here, but I would like to know the difference between what you had told her otherwise and what I was actually, when we physically looked at it, the number was there.
I didn't find that table.
Oh, can you elaborate for us?
So if we went with the unit assessments?
Mm-hmm.
It would've been $23,000.
And then we went with, okay, and we went with front footage. But our consensus, I thought, was unit.
Those were, we were frontage on that.
I went with unit, but I, but let me say something, wasn't, wasn't...
That we kept it, we were trying to keep it flat throughout the...
Right. But another instance, by the way, if I'm right, on, on the apartment building up Poppy, one way it was $22,000, another way it was $11,000, that's what I saw.
Like 10, 23, I don't know, 23.
On that apartment building up Poppy, between 228th and 229th.
Correct.
Correct. So the way we, the way the council did it, drove it to the lower, no, to the lower number, the unit number would've been higher, if I'm correct in that.
Correct.
Right.
If, if it's the table you're thinking of, I, I found it, I believe, and it was about $11,000 or $23,000.
The problem with this, but the problem with this is some people will benefit from the, from the front entrance units, some people will not benefit, okay? You're gonna have a give and a take, I mean, because as I looked over all the numbers, I saw some people not benefiting and some people benefiting, okay? For instance, the apartment building is benefiting huge by going this way, the way the council voted on, because I voted against that, okay? And I saw other numbers, residents, that actually would've benefited my way, not your way. It's a tough call, that's what we got elected to do, so I, I, you know, I understand, but I voted my way, my conscience, and you voted your conscience, which is what we do.
When I thought we were unit and you were footage.
That's our house, if you go that way, that would go in unit and that was most consistent throughout the city.
No, because Craig was recommending footage.
Yeah, opposite.
You're opposite.
Well, then my sense...
So right now, you've got a chance, so...
You know, I do, except that we're trying to stick with...
Yeah.
One way throughout the, basically to keep it consistent throughout the city, that's what we do then, that's the consistency.
What, what makes it difficult on Butterfield is you have a number of commercial properties.
Okay.
So then you gotta try to evaluate, like, how many units is the hardware store? How many units is the vacant lot, commercial properties? That's where it got really difficult, especially in Butterfield.
But like I say again, I just wanna tell you that, you know, it was a 4-1 vote before you went to the footage, as we, Craig, uh, you know, uh, you know, got forth and, uh, supported, and then I went with the unit, but again, as I stated before, you know, some people will come up better, some won't, um, you have to look at the whole project in general, I would imagine, um, I'm still the believer that one unit is, you know, uh, one unit is one provider, for one's part, that's how I look at it, okay? But I understand where it's a different, you know, I can't look at it from that resident, resident viewpoint, I have to look at it from the council viewpoint, so, so to me, um, just wanna make you understand again, that some benefited from going your way and some didn't. As, as if it would've gone my way, some would've benefited and some wouldn't. So you have to look at the whole broader picture.
How does it appear to my collection, was it...
Yeah, I wanna see, but anyways, to the record, I apologize, I didn't mean to mislead, um, that, that person, so thank you for clearing that up.
The only actual right way that's gonna be to public cap is no assessments at all. We already know that, okay, so that's that. Anyways, um, any further discussion, Joe, you have?
Well, the only, the only question I had, uh, was, you said there was the three concerns that were brought up, are they reflected in the plans? We approved these plans, are those still gonna be addressed in the future or...
I guess I'll be guiding the discussion tonight.
That's the next, that's the one.
Okay.
Does that one have to rule?
Then I have none.
Basically, uh, you know, do you wanna consider any streetlights on Butterfield? Do you wanna replace tree for tree? Some of those we could make as alternate bids if you'd like.
Well, I think that would be a good idea, doing alternates, because then we can see what the base is and then à la carte, depending on the budget, on the map. That's agreeable.
But I, I do believe the consensus was decide a parking, but if you don't want a parking, you wanna go narrow, then we would change the plans to the 28-foot street.
Well, that'll come up in the next discussion on one of the streets of this...
No, we decide that here, but it would affect parking too, correct?
Kevin, any verdicts? No, sir? Joe, no fears? Rob?
Well, that's where I'm kinda concerned with, uh, parking on one side versus not parking. Um, is there any, um, ideas? Uh, you know, if you look at the, the southern one, around the 227th, I think it is, you know, there's a lot of homes, driveways are maybe two or three car lengths, so I can see parking on the street there, but Butterfield, they're, they're kinda pushed away. Wouldn't it be good to have a consensus of all the property owners to do away with parking at all on that street to give them back their portion of the yard that so many were complaining about and just kinda have it as a, as a business road, I would think, rather than the residential parking?
When I look at that, I don't think it's all that necessary.
Me neither, so...
I think the main thing some was arguing was pioneer days?
Right.
Parks on that. Well, I'm thinking with parks on that road, because that's the gray ground.
Gray ground.
They sit, but I don't think they park on it, on the street, um, so that would be my, my thought is to really just look at that, do we wanna make it like a, a small business, um, road to get to the other developments back there, not have any parking on either side of it, and is that what those seven or eight residents really want? We can do that.
I don't...
We can widen it to parking on one side or could make it even wider and park on both sides if they wish. I, I'm open to whatever, you know, we decide, I guess, as far as parking, there's no parking for, no parking to give them as much room as we can, save as many trees as we can, so...
I remember one individual had a long driveway, just here, and then the other ones dipped. Some were concerned about parking, some weren't, um, you know, I look at...
Really large lots, so...
Right, and I, I look at, I look at these projects, you cannot appease everybody, it's impossible, because if you make one person happy, you're gonna make 10 other people not happy, or vice versa, so, um...
All the people that were talking about making it wide enough, we're gonna do it, do it right, but you gotta realize right now they have a very, very narrow road, so even a 28-foot road...
Is bigger on the, they have 24 right now, right?
Yeah, but I don't think it's 24.
Okay, because it's 28, 35. Okay, 28 would be 12...
Probably around 22 right now.
Okay, and, and, and 28 would be, uh, 12, 12, 2 and 2. So...
About two minimums, say.
Right, and that would be 12 foot for the lanes each way, and then it'd be two foot on the side, that'd be 28. Uh, 35 would be what, 14, 14, and then six, and then three, no, uh...
The parking is 11, 11, 1 and 7.
Really?
And then one foot for, you know, the face of the curb. So I would, I would think, for, I'm thinking about pioneer days too, if we go smaller, no parking, I would put a side mark on one side or the other, um, that would be my suggestion, you know, to the whole plan.
Do you have people that sit on the sidewalk, something like that?
Get them off the street, um, a little bit, you know, but...
How does that affect that kind of now?
Well, whatever you gotta do to get the aid to...
You have to get the aid, but the...
Yeah, but...
That, that's doable, yes, could be more trees and such, but...
So I, I don't...
No parking with the side mark? I don't think would be...
Not, not much would be harmed with the sidewalk to the curb.
Right, and that's what I would suggest, but...
Right, but how to sidewalk to the curb, not have space in between?
Right.
You could do that on a residential road or something, main flow traffic road, like a bridge or worse like that right now, in front of those car lots that we have, you see no break between sidewalk and curb.
Again, that's something we could fairly add pretty easily as an alternate, man, too, right?
As an alternate? An alternate? Yeah, I, I, I've always liked alternates, because it gives you the ability to see the base and then basically à la carte what you want or what you can afford and then not go crazy about needing to go all the way, so, um, that's doable then like that?
I would go 35 and it'd be like, hey, we're gonna have a sidebar, because some of them might ultimately go onto the sidebar. I've been, I've been through a number of projects, so people have no sidewalks now, they're not big fans of sidewalks, but if they have the sidewalk, probably want the sidewalk back, so, I don't know how well we see doing it, I guess, either, so...
Well, I know it's, like, I live on Poppy, the sidewalk can be a safety, because it keeps the people off the road. Um, because with that curb, they're not jumping the curb to kill you, okay, uh, or running to you. Well, I understand, now I watch the mailbox, when I'm walking a mailbox on Poppy Street going north, the southbound, you know, the northbound traffic's in the opposite lane, so not worried about them, but coming home as I'm walking that north to southbound traffic, you know, you know, I, I listen for cars, because I wanna make sure I'm out of their way, because they don't seem to understand you get out of your way from the deal to a pedestrian, I understand that, um, and I'm always worried about kids and people getting hit on that road, so a sidewalk keeps them off the road, which is, which is, if we're gonna do this, we wanna take safety into consideration as an issue, so, um, all right, is that something we can do? As an alternative? Okay.
That's all we have.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, there are a couple houses on this street that, I mean, if they didn't have any parking, they couldn't ever have anybody over, unless they wanna walk from a certain area, because there is, I mean, I'm thinking of the one house that they have room for putting their two cars in the garage, and then they got two spots on there.
Right, but the problem is, if they want parking, they don't wanna give up any land to get-
Right, you know, I understand that, I'm just saying that there will be, I mean, for most people that have a longer driveway, it's not gonna be that big of a deal, it will affect a couple of other people who are, their houses are pretty close to the street, which are the newer houses, not the older ones. And, you know, I'm all for sidewalks in our city, I, you know, it's, that's a small road, a narrow road, and if you choose to walk down that way, and you have two cars coming, you're jumping in someone's yard, you just are, there's nowhere to walk safely on them. So if we could, you know, provide a sidewalk, that'd be great, as far as pioneer days, they're not allowed to sit on the street anyway, when we're out there, we may come sit up in the yards, if they're on the street, I've gotten totally enough to, that's part of our rules, is you're not on the street. So whether there's a sidewalk or not, people are generally pretty good about, you know, their friends or their, their sitting back on the ground, so.
To do this, you have to have a twenty, you have to go twenty-eight for the measure, right, twenty-eight to have that done? You wanna go thirty-five?
No parking.
Yeah, no parking, twenty-eight.
Technically, you can go twenty-six.
Okay, twenty-six.
Your minimum city standard is twenty-eight.
Okay, otherwise, and now same, we'll go for twenty-six? So that'd be twelve, twelve, one and one?
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven, eleven?
Two and two.
Eleven, eleven, two and two. Interesting. All right, so we have some options or alternatives we can do.
Okay, if, if we go with a side one option, we might wanna think about the twenty-six. It's not only wide right way, there's fifty for the right way, it's not sixty-six or six.
So if you go twenty-six, then how wide is the sidewalk? Three feet? Four feet, what is that?
Wide, and you wanna at least, if you're gonna decide, three's four feet.
Four feet, right?
Minimum.
So if you go twenty-six, you save two feet from the twenty-eight minimum, if we do, so they really only cuts two feet into their yard. From twenty-eight to twenty-six, because you go to twenty-six, you save that two feet, and so for two feet more to make a four-foot sidewalk, you're only really coming back, and also, I'm not trying to jump here, but I'm just, look at the numbers, whatever, but you understand what I'm saying? Okay. We have to make sure the public understands that when we get to that point. All right, that's, and MSA goes along with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So can you make that an alternate option, then? If anyone's different, you mentioned, is that?
I don't think it'd be, I'd prefer all to take two.
Well, I would think the two options would be twenty-six and twenty-eight.
So we don't have an option, parking on the street one side? Because we can then bring that to the hearings, if you want, really let them decide.
Well, in that case, you have to put the three options.
Would you do?
Six, twenty, three, five?
Pretty much the same width, right? No sidewalk, parking on one side? It's pretty much a wash, you know, if they want the sidewalk, you don't get parking, if you want parking, you don't get the sidewalk, so. I would think that's two options right there. The other one is thirty-five, and open your door to the street.
Well, that's, that's pretty simple, thank you. Thank you, I like that. Correct? All right. Kevin, any discussion?
Um, do the people get letters to that effect, that if you give three options, well, even if you have nobody showing up for the meeting, they've gotten a letter, showing the opportunities, and buyer beware, I mean, if you don't come and talk about it, you'll get what we decided?
Yeah, we've done that before, and I actually have a survey back if they want to.
Is that expense involved, or time?
It's just a letter and some stamps.
It gives, then we can, we give every opportunity, so after the fact, people can't come and say, I didn't know this was going on, and somebody may be happy about that. I think it's a great idea.
Well, you know how close.
Usually has some strong opinions.
Yeah, well, that's where we're with some of our coverage, no matter.
I got a street with thirty homes, and one person wanted the sidewalk, and the other twenty-nine did not, so.
Well, I just wanna say, I mean, the pre-planning that we're doing now will hopefully prevent us from going into some of the chaos we had with Riverdick, I'm trying to say that politely, okay? We had some chaos through that construction period, and people reacting, overreacting quickly, and not giving us the opportunity to correct certain things, that will be corrected in a sprint from an overbrained period of time, whatever, I understand you, the more that we do now, pre-planning, discussing this now, it'll leave you with some of those headaches, hopefully, as we go through these projects, because these are big projects for these areas, they really are. Some don't see a need for it all, but some don't understand the infrastructure of the city, how complete, how worn down it is in certain areas, and just not write to certain areas, so, we can say anytime you can make the public more aware, you're better off having them on your side. That's my care.
If the survey is not any additional work, I think it's a great idea, so.
I have just one caution, though, council's gonna leave it up to them, like, seventy-five percent want this option.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, that's what we'll do? No, I, I, I really think that, I was just leaving it just the options, and it is up to us, because we, you know, that's why they put us here.
I guess what it comes down to is, we can see their input, hear their input, but we got elected to make a decision for what's best for a majority of our city. Some will like what we do, some won't like what we do, we can't appease everybody, but the other day, at least, they had their input.
And I look forward to such that we're taking input.
Correct.
Yes, we're taking input. Thank you, William.
Joe? Rob?
We're working on K, right? And I just wanna know, when we get ready to vote on this, what are we voting on? It says, approve plans inspected for the 2020 street reconstruction and water main resolution twenty-
Well, I'm gonna add that on the, on the, uh-
The three options?
So, so these are the plans approved. From what I understand, we'll do an alternate, Butterfield for a twenty-six foot street with a sidewalk. I don't, I think we'll do an alternate tree replacement, then, one for one. Of course, it'll be two-inch trees, not wrecked or taken. And I don't know why we really talked about or decided, do we want an alternate on the streetlight even on Butterfield?
Where do they have it now, anything?
I don't believe they have any, then.
It's dark.
It's dark?
It is dark.
There's no light.
Well, you know, I mean, to prevent accidents, you have to have a light, you know what I mean? We don't like a last one twenty-four hour light at times of year, so we have to do what we have to do, so we should look at, have an alternate look at that.
So was it one of the alternatives, like the no sidewalk, side parking?
I'd give a thirty-two foot. No sidewalk, you can park up on the side of the thirty-two foot street.
All right, so we go for twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-five, and up, or thirty-two now, and thirty-five, all right, all these options?
I just don't know why you would do a twenty-eight. If you're not a sidewalk, you go with twenty-six.
Right, oh yeah, I agree with-
We're gonna park on one side, we need the thirty-two, so that's two options.
Okay, right, okay. So two options for two alternates, and then the survey?
Yeah.
Okay, is that right? I'm clear. Sarah, ready for K? All right, now I gotta phrase this, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adopt approval of plans inspected for the 2020 street reconstruction and water main improvement resolution two thousand twenty dash oh eight, adding on, right, can I say that right, is that an addition, adding a survey and two alternates? One for twenty-six feet, and one for thirty-two?
Twenty-six feet with a sidewalk.
With a sidewalk, thirty-two feet with no sidewalk and parking. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Councilor Barr makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Muvar makes a second, it is a, a resolution, so, council votes. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, thank you, thank you very much, good discussion, okay. Now moving on to, okay. Moving on to, I'll just make sure I'm here with the right one.
Parking restriction.
Right? Parking, parking restriction on municipal state, MSA routes for the 2020 street reconstruction and water main improvement resolution two thousand twenty dash oh nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so all of these streets on this project are on your state aid system. All of them except two hundred and twenty-fifth lane allow for parking on one side. Two hundred and twenty-fifth lane, all these streets would be, other than Butterfield, will be rebuilt to their current width, that street is wide enough to park on both sides, they're ready. But with the former discussion, this resolution would have to be revised slightly, or I would have to send in another one for Butterfield.
So how do you wanna revise this one?
I think I'd rather just give you another one, be able to throw out consent next meeting for Butterfield.
Do some, wherever you feel comfortable.
And that, but we do have to take, no, we leave Butterfield in this one, because that's one of the options, so. This, this resolution's okay, I just have to prepare another one for Butterfield, twenty-six feet, because that would say no parking either side.
Okay, that'll be on the next, the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so we can go ahead? Okay, so any discussion on this? Joe, I'll start with you.
I'm just curious, so do you want a motion to approve as-is, or you want a motion to approve excluding Butterfield?
So we approve this as-is, because the thirty-two foot on Butterfield is one option, but I'm just preparing a new one for the alternative Butterfield twenty-six.
Which would be, and I-
We can bring that to the next meeting.
Right, to the next meeting, so we still have two implements to the one.
With a sidewalk.
With a sidewalk.
Okay. Joe? All right?
No, no discussion. Mine, I just wanna reiterate, we put the no parking on the mailbox side, where we don't really exclude parking basically on both sides, by putting no parking on one side, and you have all the mailboxes on the right side, we've excluded parking pretty much altogether. I would like to see no parking on the mailbox side, because then you kinda save your space.
Right, and you don't have any interference with the mailbox, which is possible, post office. Correct?
I've got one request for no parking on the east side, which is the Hyatt side. I don't know what side of the boxes are, I don't know.
I don't either.
All right. That's open for discussion.
But other than, uh, pioneer.
All right, Sarah? Okay, so I can read this, and we can vote on it as-is? What you're saying, okay. Do I have a motion tonight to adopt parking restriction on MSA's municipal state aid routes for the 2020 street reconstruction and water main improvement resolution two thousand twenty dash oh nine?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Muvar makes that motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Councilor Goodwood makes a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now moving on to Pearl Architect, liquor store expansion.
Honorable mayor members of the council, in front of you is the proposal from Pearl Architecture for the store expansion, just to give you a little insight, I've covered more of this, and Dave and I were working through the weekend on the liability and the insurance coverage, so there's gonna be the vision of funds and things that were sort of miles going forward on those fronts, but everything else in the proposal is a total of sixty-eight thousand three hundred million dollars plus administrative costs that are outlined in this fee schedule. And then the project timeline, we wanted to get going right away on this schematic design, design development, construction dogs have a bidding in April, and construction from across nineteen to May through November, is the project, projected end date. So with that, we're looking for some approval conclusion upon some things here, I have from me regarding insurance, but hopefully I can answer any questions you have.
All right, now, first question, John, is that schedule in November being completed? All right, work with the holiday season?
Making work.
Okay, so now, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas time, I'll take time for it, so I'll give you a chance to have. The question I have is, this, this amount of money, is this the actual architectural fee for the project itself in full, or is it just the beginning of something?
So is it to design it, come up with the plans, build the project, get everything rolling?
For this amount? So in other words, it's not sixty-eight, another fifty thousand dollar rower, so?
No, this should be-
That better be.
This is a bid price, I'm assuming, and pretty much a bid for a project.
Right, so this, and so what he's done is, he's decreased the size from forty by sixty-three, which is twenty-five hundred twenty square feet, to thirty-eight by sixty-four, to twenty-four thirty-two, which is a difference of eighty-eight square feet. If you take that out of a hundred and fifty dollar per square, dollar per square foot finished, it saves thirteen thousand two hundred, if you take it at two hundred dollars per square, dollar per square foot finished, it becomes seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. So I'm just saying, you're saving between thirteen and seventeen thousand dollars, by cutting out the eighty-eight, but it allows us to have an alternate where we don't have to put the two coolers in, as Kevin was talking to me earlier today, we have an option to do the coolers, John, does that make sense to you? Your cooler's gonna be moved back, we know that, we can have either one cooler on, or two coolers on, oh, yeah, or wait, so. I like that option, to be honest with you, because, you know, when you're moving, your coolers are big now.
Two doors, I believe, once.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, you could have more space, whether it'll be two or one, but you'll have the space to do it.
Correct.
Without changing more construction, it's just another person, the coolers, you can put in.
Yep.
All right, another potential added alternate, I don't think it's covered in this, but the adjustments could be made in the industry as we go forward, right now, you have two sets of tiles that are different in there, with a potential third set of tiles, we can't find matching between one of the two existing tiles, so one of the alternates we're talking about putting in there could potentially cause savings, it comes back to favor, is just re-tiling the whole floor, because now you're gonna have potentially two different sets of tiles.
Well, you can't do that, that's-
Right, because we were talking about putting that in as an alternate, if we can't match, I mean, it's kinda like, you don't know what's out there right now for that one, and it's obviously-
Well, you're right, and if you have a cracked tile, you can't find a piece, then what do you do, put a new piece, or a new piece that doesn't match that piece, and, you know, you look like a Mickey Mouse outfit.
I think it was in preliminary discussion, we weren't able to come to the finalization of it, because just redoing the whole different, the floor with something other than tile, kind of like a mock wood type finishing is what Miles and Jack had observed as kind of the trend.
They also have tile that looks like wood forks, you know, which I like, I put it out, it looks great, something like that, as long as it spans, which, you know, so easy to doer, or whatever, if anything, you wanna go twelve by twelve, or sixteen by sixteen, you have twenty by twenty square tiles, whatever you do, and then you can, because right now, you don't have that right now, what size do you think you have on that right now? Small one?
I think it's eighteen.
Eighteen?
Like a foot and a half.
But we gotta do it, the wood floor tile looks really good.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, and I think we were very clear with Miles on the project cap on this, six fifty, I think is where we came from. So we wanted to find as many ways to make this work without, you know, cutting back on the end product, that's why you say some of these things in here, coolers and then the lawn irrigation, do we really need that, I don't know, we can make that decision later, so.
Right, and as I look at it, and my opinion, council, is that with having a space available for two coolers, and not putting the coolers in right away, should we see that the expansions really were done and driven up our profits and our, our, our customer base, then of course, it's easy to say, you know what, we want another cooler, you know what I mean, then you just have to go with the cooler, because you got space, versus having no space and changing the building again, which, we don't wanna do that. Is that about right, your thinking?
Yeah, well, I think, I got a little lost in the cooler discussion, so if you look at the, say there's eighteen doors, if you add two more doors to the coolers, wood flies.
On the side, or whatever.
Well, I think two, four just side. It's two total, I, yeah, so we have thirteen on our big cooler, we would add two more doors, which is of, I think, approximately eight times. Yeah, I, two more cooler doors, and I don't know about, I guess I wasn't aware that there was a possibly way to do that, I thought if, if at all possible.
Well, if it comes in the price that we brought on, I guess we can, we're just seeing that, if it goes above that cap, they're like, we have the ability to look at it differently. But yeah, it's in the cap, if it's in that amount, we'll do it. So, so what I'm saying to you, basically, the one question that Kevin needed, from my discussion with him earlier today, was, that sixty-eight is for those plans to go into bidding, to get this thing done, do you want to get a bidding on it?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure what page it is on your packet, but the overall, I'm down to third, the schematic design and construction documents, including the bidding, so putting everything together is fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars, and then the construction administration phase is twelve thousand nine eighty, I don't know what else could be on the top of that.
Okay, so, but that sixty-eight gets us through those stages.
It should get us through all projects, for miles, or- And a lot comes out of the liquor fund, right?
And then the, and then the, and then as far as about over twenty, you're saying that, but as that way, you still have, because you'll be pre-planning this anyways, what's gonna be coming as that stage winds down?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, Sarah, any questions on this?
No, I, I think, I think to see if we're gonna do the floor, and I think we need to do it right, and put all the, and two titles, and three, you're really gonna make a look at that, and just let's try and get the floor.
Well, it's part of what we're all doing here, because I'm hoping to be doing a big grand opening myself, to let people know that this store's changing in a bigger way, with more selection and pricing.
I would very agree with that.
So we can change the name. Okay, Rob, you have anything to say?
No, I don't have anything for her, but it looks good.
Right, Joe? Kevin?
Without going back into my files here, the sixty-eight thousand, how does that compare to the building cost, when we're looking at option A, B, and C, like the six hundred forty-two thousand, did they have the architectural fees and stuff in there, was that in line?
It was roughly about ten percent of the product cost.
Okay.
So this is pretty close to the six fifty.
Okay. All right, and again, just so the public know, we, as a council, most if not all of us took a tour of the bottle shop over there, it's cramped for space, it's busting at the seams, the profits are growing, it is the only revenue stream that the city has, other than tax dollars, we feel this is about a five to a six year payback to We feel this is about a five to a six year payback to do this improvement and offer more selection for the public, and we do appreciate their patronage, and we know you guys appreciate having it here in our community and generating revenue for our city as a whole, so this isn't something that we're taking willy-dilly, I mean, six hundred and fifty K is a lot of money, and we looked at all the benefits and if any drawbacks, which we found, very few if any. We're investing in something that's been giving back to the city, and this is a, be a nice enhancement and offer more selection to people who patronize it, and again, people are coming through town, this is an all-district residence, two people come through town, they're stopping at this establishment and spending money, and it stays in our town, so just let me know, thank you.
Okay, and I want to go on record and add to that, that it stages us that if this state ever goes liquor and wine and grocery stores, we will be ahead of it and be able to be more competitive and be more of a destination space with more, more product line, better pricing, because we can buy in bulk. It stages us to be competitive in a capital market, which is what we want to do. Also, I just want the public to know that we are not depleting the liquor muni fund by any stretch of imagination, that we've left well enough of money to be able to cover us in case a recession comes or whatever, we are just fine, this money here will be put to good use to generate more money from our liquor muni, at the same time, we're not depleting the fund like I stated, the fund is still going to be hefty and be there when we need it, should that day arise. I want to make sure everybody understands that in the view of the public. This decision was not taken lightly, as Kevin said, and we've done our research, but this is a way to be competitive in a bigger way, instead of, so instead of just being a competitive store right now, it'll be a destination space, it's about as well as we did with Ethan, and I know John's been very excited about this, I know he has many things he's probably won't give his mind right now, and I can't wait to see it all put into effect. So on that, barring any further discussion, do we have, is this, this a resolution, right? No, this is not, this is just a direction?
Yeah, it's just a simple motion, and I could add some things into the motion for our attorney here, so. One, deletion of section L on liability, contractor accepting indemnification language acceptable to the city attorney, and contractor to provide insurance, can be amounts and coverage acceptable to the city attorney.
And it's all based on standard legal language, what it has to be in.
So, all right, so I just have to add, standard legal language to be added to this?
We can just add, as a sort of, you put that in.
Why, do you want to put it in? Oh, great, thank you. So, do you need a motion, right?
Yep, including those three conditions.
All right, do you have a motion to adopt the Pearl Architect liquor store expansion with those items mentioned? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Newar makes that motion at a second? Councilor Hood makes a second? Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right, we're on our way. Okay? All right. Second, you know, for the public, I see no bar.
Nope.
We have an N.
He doesn't really have a N.
Added it.
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah, I forgot, don't forget that. Geez, man, I forgot this. All right, so how, how, how can you read that?
So, just the mayor members of the council, after the neighborhood meeting, I put some figures together, as you recall, there was a lot of discussion about the street width. The current design was, was a thirty-five foot back-to-back street, which matches the street that's on the south end of that project, basically bringing that curb and gutter through the, through up to the north and matching to the, to the north there, the same width. The other discussion was possibly lowering that width to the city's standard minimum twenty-eight foot, which is actually matching the north end of that street right now, coming out the bottom, it's narrowing down to twenty-eight feet. So I put together here, not only to decide maybe what the street width should be, but also to get a formal cost together and presentation to the board, so we can kind of get moving forward on when or if they're going to participate in this project and what their cost might look like. So the table is, is three alternatives, and they're all the same for, the only difference on the top and the bottom are the width of the roads. So alternative one includes asking the city of Oak Grove to pay fifty percent of both the road and the trail. Option two is to ask Oak Grove to pay fifty percent of the trail, but only that portion of the road that's in their city. So as you move north, the last third of this street actually moves out of Oak Grove altogether, so they wouldn't pay that basically last third of the street, I guess that would probably be a fair request on their part. And then the third alternative would include the same as two, but they also wouldn't share the cost of the trail, and we had that with their staff, they were pretty much up in the air on whether their council would share that trail cost or not, so. Again, I like trying to come to some decision on street width and which alternative we're thinking we could refine these costs from there, and then present that to Oak Grove as an official project that we'd like them to consider. And then the table, as you can see, would be broken down, St. Francis costs and Oak Grove costs for each alternative in each road.
Well, at that meeting, by the way, the concern of people at that meeting, they don't want parked cars on that section, they don't want, they don't want the thirty-five foot from what I understood.
Only one of those.
Right, so I think they were open to twenty-eight, but now I'm wondering if, you know, you don't want to match it, twenty-six will kind of like go like this, right? So you can't do that, so you want to keep it the same as the south part.
Being out of the last.
Right, we don't, we don't want that, because that's just a headache bigger on. So twenty-eight would be the way to go, twelve, twelve, two and two, very easy.
Eleven, eleven.
Rex has got a sidebar. All right, that's eleven, eleven, two and two.
I'm sorry, we, we'd have an extra, we'd have a twelve, twelve.
So it was, all right. All right, anyway, I would happen to agree, in the sense that the trail, by the way, on the south side, the south from two twenty-seventh to two twenty-fifth, is on our side of the road, St. Francis side of the road, as we all know, but it's not on Oak Grove side, so I can understand their argument on that side, mainly the people that are going to use it are most likely our people, not their people. We're only talking about four residents on that side, from north of two twenty-seventh up to the little street, I think it's four or five, something like that, right? So, what I'm saying to you is that from two twenty-eighth, well, from two twenty-seventh is one, two, three, four, five up to twenty-ninth, but I mean, these are big lots, I mean, there's seven acres, four acres, it's a glass there. So, what I was thinking of, just want to bring to council attention, is that the trail really benefits our city, and to be able to not have an argument with Oak Grove, but to get them on board with us to do this the right way, and not just do an overlay on their side, which would be ridiculous, we have to present this in a way that makes sense to them, and I know, I think it makes sense to us. So I, I would recommend to council, twenty-eight feet, okay, with a trail on our side of the road, and go with option or alternative three, is what I, that's what I would recommend to council, and I'd be open to any comments you have to make on this. Joe, I'll start with you, when you have the chance.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I get it, all our trails are technically in our borders, I don't know, they're not going to use as much as we would, but I guess it's up to each individual resident, just like anybody that's going to the road.
But there's not that many residents on their side as there is on our side, that's, that's what I thought.
Right. But I don't think there's any round of alternative two, but I'm willing to go with whatever comes.
I mean, you could...
Well, let's put it like this, you've dealt with Oak Grove, three months of a sewer.
You're only here...
Okay, I'm just saying, okay, I'm just bringing that up.
Come on, this is the new year.
I, yeah.
New edit.
Yeah, and I'm a year older, yeah, okay.
I guess just throw out one other option that I, I'm here, their street is about thirty-four percent, instead of like nothing or fifty percent, you could go with the same as the street.
Well, that's not a bad idea, king percentage, that's one alternative, sixteen percent, will that make a difference? So I'll have to find out. Does that make sense to you? So another result, all two would be fifty percent, the northern portion of Poppy Street is completely, completely within St. Francis, but then the alternative, Oak Grove, would pay fifty percent of the trail, would now be thirty-four percent.
Right, so their, their cost would be somewhere between the one ninety-four and the one sixty-nine.
Okay. So are you looking for direction on how to present that to them?
I was looking for some direction on which, which alternative we'd like, as in I can refine my cost. Mr. Mayor, I, I like alternative two, with the Oak Grove paying, which would essentially be a third of the trail, because I can see what, what you're saying, that the, the northern portion of the trail, a third of it, isn't even covered in...
Along the road, yeah.
So we, and the road, so you, you separate that, and then you basically take the trail that's left, and you just say, hey, we'll do two-thirds, you do a third, so that's how I would look at it, is you just pay a third of the trail that actually touches.
Oh, I understand completely, but I also understand your resentments too, but I understand exactly what you're saying. I mean, I've seen this under frustration, okay, I have to say it one time, okay? So I'll go with what council wants to do on this, that's fine with me.
I personally think it should be fifty-fifty, but at the same time, you're not going to pay it fifty, and probably more of our residents do use that road, because we have a larger residential presence just off of Poppy to that neighborhood, so I think to me, the alternative two would be more of a compromise, but...
And we already know what they've agreed to, what they would do, they would do just an overlay, where we're doing a full reconstruction, it won't match, and we'll end up having a problem later on that will affect our people, and so our, our full construction will be affected by their not, their partial overlay, or the overlay versus the full construction, because of curbing that, right? So we'll end up with a headache later on, that one that I'm getting from.
But I just think too, that just because it's on the borderline that our residents shouldn't end up paying so much more than their, for a road that everybody uses, that's all I'm saying.
All right, so what would you do, drop the thirty-three percent, that thirty-four percent you're saying?
Yeah, we'd do a two-way order.
And go on with Rob's?
Similar to the road, they're not going to pay for trails.
They're only going to pay for trail within their boundary.
Well, it's technically your boundary with their alignment, but go up to their alignment basically with the road, the corporate boundary with the road and the trail.
So Craig, the, the MSA money, we're calling it a trail, but in essence, it's a sidebar.
Yeah.
Isn't some of that covered down there that MSA is covering? So, can we present that to them as far as, it's really not a pocket to them, they use their MSA money for a sidebar? We're calling it a trail, and we're connecting our trail system, one, to benefit our residents to follow it by the city versus having each resident now follow that as a sidebar, I can keep it clear, so I think, you know, presenting it with at least a third, alternate number two, and the MSA dollars to cover the sidebar, is more than fair, I think.
And I would agree completely, and I want to say to you, after checking with Craig for their dollar amounts that are available to them with the MSA, they are able to do this by, actually, they can actually borrow in future amounts quite a bit, the question is, will they do that? And all, so the other question is, how many other projects they have down the road, that could be affected from what they take out today, so, you know, because you end up running Peter and April, so, look, we want to go out there with the best possibility of getting this approved, okay? So Craig, tell us what you want us to do.
I, I think it's more than fair, where we use option two A, where they only pay for the trail and the road that's within their subdivision, or their boundary.
Okay, so if the fifty percent of the trail will become thirty-three percent?
Basically, yeah, thirty-three percent.
Kevin, what do you have to say?
Um, I agree with the thirty, I wouldn't go thirty-three, I'd go thirty-four, whatever the exact percentage is, not thirty-three. I would go to the table and show them all one, all two, and all three in those forms, and then we can suggest all two, just to show some good faith that, you know, we know what our percentage is, ours, and what, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But we need to get past that stigma, I know, mayor, like you said about the past, the past is the past, I know who's on the board, you know who's on the board, like anybody else, we still have to go, every day is a new opportunity, if they slam it door in our face, we walk away, just like when you're not, when you're campaigning, but there's some doors that's going to open sometime, and we need to be ready for when that door does open. Now, it might not be soon, might not be years in my lifetime, sir, but we need to try, I hate to be such, and I'm not usually an optimist, I'm usually as pessimistic as hell, but, I mean, you keep bringing this up, we just can't be that way, there's some people that'll go against us every time on this, I mean, if we deal with East Bethel this way and Machan this way, we'd be known as the outcast outlaw city, and I don't want that, I don't want that stigma, you know, we need to change this, past administrations here, future administration, or current administrations elsewhere, it's, some of that's old news, let's just try and, you know, be diplomatic and professional about it, that's all I'm asking, but I'd say all one, all two with the exact percentage that they have, that should be their responsibility, and then all three, let, let them see all three of them, and then maybe we make our choices. And like I said, anyone who's go to a meeting with their students, talk to them outside of class time, and say hi, how are you, and if they, you know, don't want to have a cup of coffee with us, so be it, then we know. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I can only say that, I don't do all the past, I try to learn from the past, but the past would show you, even the three years of this council in the past here, it hasn't been exactly easy, so I would just say to you that I want to be as open, I am willing to a meeting with their mayor and their city administrator, with our ma, with our city administrator, myself, I am willing to do that, but I can tell you, it still will be a difficult road, but I only open-minded, try to open up the doors, as I extended for, to many times to them, we need to act like sister cities and work together, it just seems like we're passing on the olive branch and not getting a response, but I'm hoping for the best, okay? I can only hope for the best. Joe, what do you say?
No.
Rob?
And I just want to reiterate the twenty-eight feet according to the...
Right.
Mid dock, the narrower the street, the slower the traffic, so...
Well, the residents don't want thirty-five, we know that.
Right, but I think hopefully that will slow some traffic down in there as we're moving with the twenty-eight feet.
And then, and then the trail of a curb, that will make it safer.
Yes, I agree.
Sarah?
Oh, I agree, I think we have to, we have to go up to them and hope for the best, and I mean, first they can say is no, and then we have to decide what we're going to do from there, but I, I don't, I don't see them taking the fifty percent, but I think that we at least have a shot if we drop that percentage, so I think we go present that, and worst-case scenario, we get alternative three.
It's a lucky thing I'm not a betting man.
I know.
God, I will say, okay, anyways, moving on here, so what do you want from us then? I want a meeting between their mayor, our, our city administrator, and you and myself, any council member, I think it should be minimal, it shouldn't be a large, but I mean, on a court.
I, I think, yeah, if we just meet with their mayor or city administrator, maybe their city engineer, I think that's...
Yeah, Craig, necessary with us, okay, yeah, let's do that. So is that a direction, and we don't need to vote on this? Well, thank you, I think that was some good thinking. Okay, moving on now to the view of the public, we don't have that for court, now we can move on to the public court.
Mayor, council, before you turn, I think your views, your 2019 fourth quarter required public report, as you can see during the fourth quarter, it was a very busy time of the year for us, which it usually is through October, November, and December, October and November were very busy months for us, you did see a little bit of a decline in the summer, that's not all that you knew for the holidays. During the fourth quarter, we did respond to one hundred thirty-four calls of service, you can see that historical data there from 2017 through 2019, we continue to see an increase in run volumes. At the bottom of the chart, I just illustrated for you, again, comparative analysis from year to year, from 2017 to 2019, we've seen an increase of over thirty-six percent of the run volume on Street that time. During the fourth quarter, we did respond to two structural charges within the city moments of St. Francis, December sixth, we responded to garage fire reported at one hundred block of the Geller Circle, I have to give credit to the St. Francis Police Department, who arrived on scene and did... did find the active fire in the garage, and was able to extinguish that fire very quickly with a fire extinguisher, obviously saving a significant amount of damage for this home. We do believe that that fire was caused by some accessory heating with the space heater located in the garage. Following that, we did do another structural fire on December eleventh, in the two hundred and thirty-six hundred block of Knightville, again, accessory heating was believed to be the cause of this fire, started around the Woodstole, the flue, the flue was in poor condition at the time of the fire. Following that, on the third page, you'll see a list of significant events, we did do quite a mutual aid in that during the fourth quarter, again, the fourth quarter is a busy period of time for most fire departments. Following that, again, we, like you illustrated, how we're making reductions in our response time, if we go back from two thousand eighteen, we did see a reduction of two minutes and thirty-two seconds on our average response time. We continue to also see an increase in our advanced medical variance usage, we outlined those for you on the next page. And I did want to show you guys our breakdown between EMS and fire-related events, fire-related calls for service. The national average is about seven percent of most fire department calls are EMS for the fourth quarter, we ended up right around sixty-one point nine percent. So we're close to the national average, but we're a little bit ahead of the curve as far as our distribution between fire and EMS calls. On the following page, you'll see some of the events that took place in relationship with community engagement, again, the fourth quarter is a busy time for us, with fire prevention up in October, being held to the schools and daycare, and obviously our French toast breakfast, social meals at the fire station. This year, for the second year row, we did staff for Halloween, and we passed out candy in front of the fire station this year. We did put some less precise focus on pedestrian safety this year, and we're able to handle backpacks with the reflective striking amen for people that are going out trick-or-treating. And finally, in December, we hosted our annual Santa Fire Truck event for NACE, I've had them report, we were able to collect over eleven hundred pounds of food this year. I would like to add to that, during the entire month of February, we are selecting food for NACE again. You can drop off anything at a fire station at any time, the north side of the station, the vestibule area is unlocked, like for our today. I was pleasantly surprised to come in this morning and see one hundred pounds of food already dropped out, so, we're really trying to partner up with NACE and support our community in our fire industry. The last couple pages are from the technical reports, we're kind of giving you a thirty-thousand-foot view of what our department's doing, shows you a little bit more of the distribution of power calls, breakdown on a quarterly basis, followed by how we break down our medical responses, based on the type of event that we dispatch to, and then the distribution of calls broken down by the day of the week, and by the time of the day. And I would be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Well, very good report, I like the graphs, by the way. Response time, I like lower, that's good.
Yes, sir.
I like community engagement a lot, so, just as we please. Rob, pass it to you.
Very good report, I did have one this year, with Santa on the fire truck, it was way warmer this year than it has been in years past.
Yes, it was.
It was a great turnout. The graphs are really good. My only concern is kind of that middle area where it seems like fourteen, fourteen to sixteen hundred, are we, are we getting more day, uh, time breakdowns coming?
Yep, and what I, what I can put together for you is I can trend from, you were on in two thousand sixteen, when you went through that transition to FDN, there was a lot of issues in that implementation process, so from a reliability standpoint, I can really track from two thousand seventeen forward with some relative accuracy, certainly everything that we have been collecting through two thousand eight, through nineteen, what I can do is try to articulate a little bit, are those trends as far as time of day? Interestingly enough, through the first month of two thousand twenty, we've seen a shift to more evening-type calls, so it does fluctuate throughout the year, but we do tend to be busy during the day. Most fire departments, most emergency services are busy as from that five AM to eight AM, and then again from three to six PM, that's when most people are kind of helping move around and notice and do more. But if that's something that you would like to see in the future, I mean, certainly.
No, I didn't draft that. It's just, you know, that's the peak time, really, you know, when a lot of stuff is, you know, like you say, you can't predict it.
Yep.
Making sure that we have.
I think you definitely see the patterns that makes.
The patterns, right, for having daytime mutual aid, you know, to really overlap that time, you know, because I think most of them end around six.
Five AM is usually where the on-site agreements stop for us, we were ahead of the curve a little bit, extended that to twenty-four percent of Bethel. We are looking at more robust program with Bethel here in the very near future. I think there's some opportunities to go west as well, we can build some relationships that way, so, very good point, and that's where we continue to try and push some of the resources.
I would like to see us, you know, partner with, with now and then, and.
I would too.
And the other one is, I want to commend you and all firefighters, because it takes them, and a lot of you guys may not know, but you can be on the fire department EMR, but a lot of firefighters have went to EMT training over the last two years, and got those certifications. I do kind of not want that to be a prerequisite, you know, I would still like to see, you know, people in the community that want to do that, and just kind of maintain EMR, because the more support we have in our community for fire and emergency services is very important to me, and I want to make sure that we're not excluding people that feel like they can't do that type of emergency services, because it does, it takes a lot of, a lot of heart to see blood and do a lot of things that the EMTs have to deal with, so. I want to commend all the firefighters for going through that course.
They've done a great job, my job is simply to clear barriers out of the way and let them do their job. And we have, as part of our last policy iteration, approved by council, EMT is now a requirement for all new hires. We did not force anybody who's an existing firefighter, we didn't want to go back into career to take a very expensive, difficult course, if they didn't feel like they either had the time or the desire to do so. Ultimately, everybody went through the EMT course, we have, we have had two that haven't been able to complete the testing process, but they're existing firefighters, so we haven't made an issue of them. The challenge that becomes is, it gets very difficult to manage, especially when you have the capabilities that we have as an organization, with the medication piece and the advanced airway pieces, it's managing in real time who can and who can't, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And there's a very clear delineation between what an EMR can do versus what an EMT can do with those variants, and so, boy, we'll take it, it becomes potentially dangerous from a management perspective, so we could certainly talk about it more offline, and what that might look like in the future.
Yeah, you know, not necessarily make it, I would like to see better ways of maybe helping those guys get to the EMT, and then new hires getting to that, that point of confidence, and being able to get into the EMT.
For sure.
And one thing I want to say, by the way, you know, we always are open to other cities working with us, through mutual aid, auto aid agreements.
Yes, sir.
And joint power grants.
Yes, sir.
So we have three tools, hopefully, we can get this in the future, between now and then, and Bethel, whatever, Oak Grove, and things like that, that we can work with, that give them three options to join our fire department, consolidate, and save costs and be more efficient, which would be wonderful, in my opinion, so, there's your tools.
Northern roads, that's on the app.
Sarah?
Great reports, I just want to commend you for your involvement in the community, from, you know, Santa and Fairchild, to showing up at the tree lighting, all those events, the breakfast was great, your presence at National Night Out, at Pioneer D's, you're doing a great job, so thank you, Mayor.
I would say great report, I like the breakdown, helps me as somebody that's not in the fire department, understand things a little better, and I look forward to more community engagement and involvement alike, and to make them and take breakfast, I look forward to being a part of some of those other events that can come up with Tuesday for the coming year.
Um, three quick questions for you, how is response time measured, just briefly, from when to when?
So our response time is measured from the time of dispatch to the time the first person arrives on scene, so it could be an agent, it could be the chief officer, it could be a captain, but from the first time a fire department official arrives on scene, that clock stops, so that's our start and our end time is our response time.
Okay. Second question, the truck with the electrical bug, it's a newer truck, how's that going? What's, give us a status on that?
Chapter one has, I'm happy to report, it's had no issues, and I would say we're probably coming up close to ten months, as we discussed when we met, when we were elected. Our understanding from Freightliner was, it was a program issue, they just had to go through this process of getting through enough updates to figure out which update solves the problem, and we did hit that threshold.
So we have more than the band data, is the warranty length on that?
So the warranty on the unit was originally lost, there's actually two separate warranties, one from Rosenbauer, who actually built the fire truck on the chassis, and one from Freightliner, who owns the chassis. Like most things, we've had multiple builders, and some of them are.
They're engines?
The warranty on the Freightliner chassis and Rosenbauer have both expired. Thankfully, Freightliner worked with us, I think through the four times we ran it up the same fault with Freightliner facility, our total bill was two hundred and thirty-six dollars, and that was past four.
Did they give us any special dispensation for this particular bug, and if it reoccurred, will it be a who's done?
The special dispensation that we got for this bug was our in warranty modes outside of warranty, minus two hundred.
As well as you should.
As far as ongoing issues, I'm optimistic that there are no ongoing issues, if we do, if we do have an ongoing issue with this bug we're adhering, we'll have a conversation about, it's not actually fixed, and we need to continue to work on this, as if it were covered under warranty.
And you know, other departments, are you talking to your peers, have their problems been solved with the same remedy as yours?
Yes, so we had, as discussed earlier, Oak Grove brought similar vehicles, Rosenbauer on freight line chassis, that had a very similar problem, theirs was identified a little bit sooner than ours, and they didn't have to go through as many iterations of the computer programming company that we did, they have since had no problems. They've had a different issue than we contained, but we built our truck with a different style of tanks.
And now that you're full-time, and again, welcome aboard, can you give us a brief glimpse of the first six months, of what your, three major things you were going to hit, do, and in those things is included business visits to our commercial citizens?
Yes, we have actually been hitting the businesses pretty hard this first month. We have been completing higher level inspections that have never been done before, we've also been doing the re-inspections in a kind of fashion. Now's the time, in the first month, I spent an awful lot of time refining our data, something that I never really had a whole lot of time for, with how I was able to illustrate for council members, going back into two thousand sixteen, which is a relatively short period of time, and trying to fix our data issues at that time, every report that I run, right, has a consequence following, right? So if I'm not getting good pass data, my current data doesn't really matter. So to have the ability to have a daily management process in place has been tremendous, right? So we have to get through this first, get everything online, done, taken care of, which is what we're doing. As I talked about, we are putting together an inspection program that's been over a month that we've never done before, planning community engagement events, is also on our priority list, which is why we're doing our food drive, the third month of February of NACE. We're also going to roll out a file-to-life program early in the spring, which should be provide residents at new cars to them, home visit, we talked about their medications and diagnoses, how it all, this car, what this car does for us, what to expect from the fire department when they show up, they're continuing to kind of push our social media as well, is another great idea for us to do a better job advising the community, what we do for them, and how we do it for them, is a big issue for us, so.
And on the commercial business, does any of the, does this offer any help in some of the insurance coverage as well, if you're bringing stuff to their attention, and they have, a side effect benefits to the commercial entities that they might have been deficient now, they could say, hey, we're.
It's had a directed impact in the relationship to cost savings on somebody's business insurance.
And the welfare of their employees as well.
Correct, certainly, there's a tremendous advantage in helping them identify potential fire hazards or safety hazards within the facility, both for their employees and for the people that visit the facility, but also just as importantly, for our crews that are going to have to go into these facilities with very little background knowledge, with very little notice, and have to try to figure out what the problem is and be able to save it. This is a relatively big change, and there's been a fair amount of discussion over the years about fire inspections in this town. One of the things that we're finding out as we're going out into some of these facilities is they haven't been inspected in twenty years.
Sure.
Right, so this isn't, you know, going back to that data, from two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen, there were seven fire inspections there in five years, right? We've done seven in the last three weeks, not including the permits, so there's just a lot of issues, so we are able to put our hands on these facilities in a much more streamlined fashion, but it is a change, which I'm.
And I'm sure it'll be appreciated over time, and the other benefits will follow, so. Well, I want to thank you very much, we're expecting big things from you for two thousand twenty, and you've done a great job, it's a great report, and the community involvement is exceptional, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, David. All right, moving on to, please, two thousand nineteen, the annual report.
Mayor, council, I'm telling you, you'll see the annual report from the police department for two thousand nineteen. In that report, you'll see a summary of the various functions of the department, and overview of the programs and events that police department participated in, as well as annual statistics compared to those of two thousand eighteen. So they begin on page three, basically a summary of the department activity in two thousand nineteen, there were a total of four thousand seven hundred and ninety calls for service, which did not include traffic stops, so officers actually conducted two thousand one hundred traffic stops in addition to those calls for service last year. The department continued to make theft a priority, theft prevention, I guess that is, a priority for us, aside from displaying certain tips and information on our Facebook pages and newsletters, things like that, officers continue to knock on some doors at night, already found some open garage doors, and actually made seventy-nine contacts with residents overnight, urging them to shut their doors and prevent some theft opportunities there, and again, ninety-five percent of the contacts are caused of, obviously, at night, and, you know, doors are just forgotten to shut. We also continue to distribute door nakers, which is a practice we started about a year ago, for, where packages are observed on door drops in front of houses, particularly during the holidays when the package deliveries pick up, just another way we're trying to keep residents on their toes, and then give them some alternative ways to get these packages delivered when they're not going to be home during the day, so. Again, we, even one example, we got last year, our community resource actually snapped the photo of the package that was left on the tent around Christmas time, put it on our Facebook page, just saying, you know, here are some tips, and a homeowner actually called their neighbor, did they recognize it, or their house, had their neighbor go with this package, so, people are paying attention somewhat, and it's working, kind of, they want it to work, so. The summary also touches on some community outreach and events the department participated in over the course of the year. Pages four and five summarize the patrol mission, some of their activities, including foster service, arrests made, other important activities, some training information. Page six, explains some part, examples of part one and two offenses, as well as parts three, four, and five offenses, just a reminder, or some information that part one and two offenses are considered reportable crimes, you know, reported to the annual crime report, some examples of part one and two are assaults, thefts, burglaries, damage to properties. Three, four, and five offenses are non-reportable, they're not reported to the FBI, the more regular, called legal, two medicals, vehicle accidents, kinds of things. The chart on page six describes some of the offenses under the part one and two, and the three, four, and five, but again, these are not complete lists, these are just some highlighted examples. And then seven, eight, further lists, some offenses, Tom, gives you some greater numbers there, types of offenses. Page nine, gets some information on our investigations unit, which investigated over a hundred and fifty cases throughout the year, ranging from misdemeanors to felony level crimes. Their report also shows the many other tasks that department investigator is responsible for, in addition to criminal investigations. One major case in, oh, two thousand nineteen, was a criminal investigation, which was led by our investigator, which, and which pulled over one hundred thousand dollars, so. One major case in 2019 was a criminal investigation in which, which was led by our investigator, which, in which over $100,000 of our property was recovered during a search warrant at one of our local residences too. So that was a very successful day and actually to this day, still looking at getting property back and vehicles back to the rightful owners throughout the state. So lots of people reunited with the property that they had. Community resource officers, we turn on page 10, along with some of the ordinance and enforcement work he's been involved with, as well as the community outreach efforts. Page 11 touches on Minnesota TZD, its Ford Zero Death Initiative. And makes it pretty painfully obvious that despite all the efforts by law enforcement throughout the state, this is actually DWI driving. It's still a major issue, as you can see by the non-DWI laws in the state of 2019, which I don't see a way to frame it, but we, we're playing with 27,000.
Twenty seven, nine seventy five.
The reserve unit on page 12, it shows how many events the reserve officer participated in. And just really shows the importance and the value that they add to the department and the community. The next couple pages, you can see the Department held its annual awards ceremony in January this year. Where three officers and one reserve officer were recognized and received the department award commendation for their exceptional service in 2019. Three citizens also received the department citizens award in 2019 for their quick action and providing aid to the two girls that were struck by a vehicle on Halloween seven. And also in 2019, we hired two new officers, officers, Officer Brandon Bowen, Officer Chase Hedges, who have been just outstanding additions. They're doing an excellent job. They both just made it through successfully through probation and we love them, so they're doing an excellent job. We'll end the report, just to explain the department drug box collected 161 pounds of prescription, I'm sorry, 261 pounds of prescription medications by the drug box, the drop box, and lobby combined with the two takeback events that have participated in them. So continuing to be a great resource for residents to get, for them to have medications for them. And with that, I just appreciate the council's continued support of us and our efforts. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Good report, especially with the graphs and community service by both police and fire, I think that's great, I've said that before, I'm very proud of that. On page six, the 2018 to 19 yearly criminal statistics, so basically it was a 7% increase one year over the other. And then, you know, on page seven, I see DWIs are up. I know you're one of the, one of the officers that had a commendation, I talked to at the ceremony. And I'm glad he's looking for that because it's sad that DWIs are still out there. And I mean, I, I, it just boggles my mind on the off week memos of the things I read that after all these years with those type of rules in place, people still drive drunk. It's amazing to me. It just boggles my mind. Anyway, and the citations I see way up, I'm glad about that, by the way. But I want to ask you, where, where are these citations mostly coming from? Forty-seven? Because the reason I ask is Poppy Street or five of the streets are like Poppy Street. And those residents, as we saw at that meeting we had on the road program, people complained on Butterfield about that, about speeding. So I'm just saying to you, I've always said and I will continue to say, the science is only good as the enforcement behind. That ends up to be in the police's hand. It's sad that you have to punish people by, but the pocketbook seems to be the only way to do it. I would rather have them follow speeds. I have a problem with someone going 35 on 30, you know, but 50 and 30 to me is unacceptable, okay? Because that's the one time you're gonna hit someone, have an accident, and we're gonna have problems. So to me, I would, you know, whether it's a 47, which is dangerous, but the other streets are dangerous too. I would say to you, I know that you'll go out and tag people, it will be good for a little while, and then all of a sudden, when you're not there, it will become the same thing again. But I've said to you, my, my first year, I think I said to you, it's sad, but the police, it's like city has to act like the adults of time to the residents who act like children sometimes. In the sense that you have to have someone slap their hand or their wrist or whatever and say to them, no, you can't speed, you can't go 50 and 30. Who else is gonna do it if we don't do it? Because they won't. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be kind of sending to the public, but at the same time, I don't wanna say, you know, once again, you can't do that because you're gonna, it's dangerous, okay? So to me, you know, we've had some difficulties with the batteries down, the snowfall, and stuff like that, and of course, digital science. But even, we have signs on Poppy posted 30 everywhere. And I still can't see people are still trying to race past that sign or whatever. So to me, I know on 221st off of Lake George Boulevard, it is widely known, and I'm sure you can allude to this. It's widely known that there's gonna be police on that road. So if you're going too fast at 55 miles an hour, you can be tagged. I've seen them at the playground there, I've seen them farther down or whatever. So I guess my point, you know, for me just bringing this up, some policeism. If they don't know you're gonna be there, they're gonna be more cautious. If they keep thinking you might be there, but they don't know you're gonna be there, they're gonna be cautious. When they know you're not gonna be there at all, then they get cocked. To me, I am actually glad to see the citations up. Actually, as someone, my wife pointed out to me on what's happened to St. Francis months ago, said they'd like to see more ticketing because people are getting outrageous in the residential areas. So I just bring that up to your attention. Obviously, you have a lot on your plate, I understand that, but we cannot overlook, it's like, you know, for the speeding part. I, I, I just, I just get frustrated when I see people riding their bumper, riding on their bumper. I don't even know if people know the law that you can't be in the left lane, that you should be in the right lane on the road. One car parked late for 10 miles an hour. I don't, I don't see people using signals hardly ever. So you have to pretty much drive cautiously because you don't know if they're gonna turn or not unless they start slowing down, which obviously is a sign of something. I'm just saying to you, I really wish people could be reeducated on their driving habits because their habits have gotten worse over time. It's just a matter of getting in your car and over a 40, 28, 29, be as fast as you can. So I would say sadly, but true, Todd, it falls to the police to get out there and ticket, hurt them in the pocketbook where it hurts, and then they'll be more cautious down the road. It'll only be good for so much longer time, and then they'll have to do it again. It's just, if anything, it is job security. And that's sad, but true. I know you don't like to do that, please don't. I'm not concerned about five miles over the limit, but these residential areas, three miles, if you call 50, that's, that's just not right. It's just not right. So I bring that up only in the sense that I've seen an increase in citations. And I know you're not doing that just to make money, you're doing that because there's a reason to do that. We don't make money by finding people or citations, we make money on growth. But there's, sometimes you have to say enough is enough, that's my point there. I like the report in general. Again, I like the community service. I see on the next page eight, eighteen active service calls, I see boggles my eye on the open doors, I mean, open garage doors. I don't know why anybody, especially in winter, wouldn't leave your door open, they have access. If they were in Minneapolis, they would be robbed completely. They would have no cars, house, anything, I can assure you of that. So lucky they're not here. Medicals, that you can't do nothing about, not my, my medical arms. Everything else looks pretty much in line. And a 7% increase, by the way, as the city grows, is not out of line, my expectations. Was very happy to see 110%, to be honest with you, so I was bad about that. So I just wanna reiterate, but that, I think, I think Delilah and the co-compliance issues and the, and the community service officer, right man for the right job. I think that's going really well, and of course, it's slowing now, but we'll see an uptick here. But I think that notification system is actually gonna help us in the long run by taking a lot of stuff off. You know, you always have the heavy stuff on your plate, Kate, but you won't have that little mini stuff on your plate, which would be nice. And Delilah and Jody are doing a great job as a partnership there, I commend you on that. And again, I commend both agencies on community service, which I think is vital to the state, vital. The drug thing just shows me the easier you make it with other drop off drugs, they will drop off drugs. And they do, which is amazing to me, but I'm glad that you do it. So all in all, thank you. I was at that ceremony for the citations, I think that was great. The resource officer, I mean, the, the reserve officer, by the way, excellent. I mean, they don't get paid, and they do it for love of the city, love of the job. Some go into full time, but I commend them as well as the staff, so thank you. Looking forward to a night out this next year and all that, because the last two of us were excellent, so we'll keep up on that. Anyway, Sarah, I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, I will commend you on the report and the excellent report. The, the numbers of DUIs and citations kind of came as a shock, but that's a good thing, because that just means that we're capturing more of those people who are obviously doing it anyway, so. I did have a couple of questions from residents. If you could kind of give us a rundown of exactly what the reserves do in our community? I think there's some, some confusion to residents, maybe, and I think if you could maybe just give us kind of a synopsis of what they can do and what they're out there doing so that people are clear, that they're out there.
They're not licensed, so they're not allowed to go out and take patients, they're not allowed to stop drivers. We have, we just recently created a schedule, so, so we'll be scheduling reserves, I don't have any, you know, we'll give time ramps coming in and do certain things where they're allowed. Once they get through probationary period, take a squad car, and then if they see a, a motor is maybe broken down, or they can provide some, some safety, like anything like that. If a little monster, a tow truck shows up, maybe quite a bit of that. One of, they're, they're, one of the main things they do is just assist us, assist us at events, football games, some of our larger events like radio, national, all of the kind of things. Some of them are kind of displayed on the page. They just really kind of just provide us support and just extra staffing when we need for traffic, pedestrians crossing, things like that, some of these larger events. But, you know, like I said, things like football games where they're, you know, they're getting people out of the locker, they have their vests on, their lights on at the street. They're getting all these motors in the parking lots, pedestrians across the street. And it just, it allows the officers to focus on other things, makes some other issues that are going on at the time, so. Basically a support role, they're not licensed, they can't, like I said, they can't stop, they can't, they're not ordered to arrest or anything like that, but just a support role. And that's just volunteer community service, we're all involved, so.
Whatever, and they, obviously, if they see something, they're calling the officers.
Yep, and they're all, they're all streaming the radio usage and things like that. They actually go through kind of mini academies where they're brought on, where they learn all the radio, like, and things like that, and how to do all the, so. Yes, they, they're kind of a seeing report role as well. So if they see something, they get on the radio or call one of the officers by phone, or whatever, what's happening.
And how many reserves do we have right now?
A hundred and fifty.
And Chase Hedges was a reserve, probably a couple of years, probably a lot of reserves.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to pass it on here, you know, it was brought to my attention on what's happened to St. Francis, of someone representing Google. I don't know if you had heard about this, somebody representing Google doing door to door with the IDs that look just like Google, whatever. And see, they had to get in to inspect something in the house for access to Google, whatever. And, and this was on, I don't know if anybody else saw it, but it was brought to my attention, and I saw it on what's happened to St. Francis. Have you heard any complaints from anybody on this? Haven't heard any local complaints.
I'm sure it would go to my.
But just to let you know, I mean, there was a gentleman who had a Google badge on and everything like that, and was pressuring this person to let them in their house. They didn't, but they were warning other people on what's happened to St. Francis not to let people in. And I can only emphasize, as I know you would too, by the way, if you have doubt of someone that's not representing the city or representing the state, call state hall or call the police. But make sure, you know, don't let them in your house unless you know for sure, like with our bottom gear people or our meter replacement people, those are all designed, uh, supported by us and, and proven to work for us. Same as with the, with our appraisers and stuff like that. But if you have any doubt of somebody, just, just because they have a Google badge on or some other badge looks real, if you're, if you're in doubt, make a call, don't let them in your house. Would be my, my advice. So surprised you didn't hear about that, but not really because it was on Facebook, so.
Trust who will be in.
You're right. Rob, what do you have to say?
Great report. Would you contribute the role of some burglaries to the neighborhood watch? Or do we need some revitalization of the neighborhood watch program?
That's one of the roles and one of the, you know, she does as a community resource officer, is trying to increase, try and increase, get our participation back up in the, in the neighborhood watch. So that is one of the roles it's based on. And again, I guess something to keep in mind, these thefts, sometimes, usually quarterly, I break them down. So the thefts aren't all death in vehicles, death in droves. This would also improve shoplifting and things like that. So they're not all these crimes, but some of them, and they're also gonna improve thefts against women and equipment, and pumps. So just to clarify, it's not all.
Right, but the, the numbers are down, so I was just kind of trying to figure out.
And they're gonna fluctuate, but I think, you know, I, besides trying to get the right places, the right time to prevent these things, which is most tangible and possible, such as overnight. You know, we're, we're gonna set up patrol and things like that to try to deter these type of thefts, but we're trying to come at it from a different angle, it's the education part of it. Just making people, putting out some other reminders, whether it's on Facebook or whatever meeting we have, just, just keeping in fresh people's brain that, you know, lock your stuff up, close your door, leave your lights on. They're gonna come on in the next, or start a community that has their door open. So that's, that's kind of the angle we're trying to come at it from. Constant reminders, for people, you know, residents, and just let them know that, you know, a lot of times these kids go out and they're just looking for the opportunity. That's why you don't grab the opportunity. They're looking for that open door, that unlocked door, the change in the ashtray, the laptop sitting on the seat. You know, they're just, they're looking to grab what they can and move on and back on, so. But we're, again, we're just trying to put the information out there, keep it fresh in people's brain, and go ahead.
That does really only think about, you know, the thing does, they don't wanna work for it, they just want these, get in and out, go out and run, you know.
So, you know, I just want our residents to know, you know, the police can't be everywhere every minute of the day. We have to work together as a community. The neighborhood watch program is great. Just watch out for your neighbors and, you know, if you see something suspicious, call the police. And I, I appreciate all the, you know, the report and all the hard work throughout the last quarter and the last year. Thank you.
Great report again. I always commend you guys with your community involvement. Look forward to being at as many of those events as I can. Same as fire. I would like to see a lot of the, a lot of the numbers you want to see down our town. Unfortunately, there are a few that are up. I know a few residents that'll be happy to see the agency assist their town.
Is that right?
Thank you for a great report. Again, very thorough, I really like it. I enjoy the alerts that you send, email through council, giving us some background stuff, as well as NICSIL. The, the street is closed, the street is open, I think it's awesome. Do you know what our current NICSIL count is by chance?
Uh, no, ma'am, I've looked for a while. I think the last time I looked at it was around 1,100.
I've been sharing, and I realize that you can share it to some of your contacts, so I've been shooting them out here and then.
It's probably been too long, I think at that time it was right around 1,100, so.
Information is key, and you're gonna do a good job at it. Again, the community service is awesome. DUIs are up, are they still passer, passerby, people coming through town, or you think it is?
It's a plan. The latest one, I believe, one officer just had one Friday, and he was nowhere near local, unless it was Samuel Park or something, so. They just, how they did here, I don't know. Where they're going, I don't even think that sometimes they know. You know, it was completely, I think they were in different departments.
And what, and what grade was here, what number was?
Uh, he actually wasn't that high, he was very, very overs, he used to say, he wasn't even double, but, you know, still, still high enough to, you know.
Did he cross the line or something, or?
Uh, I don't recall why he was stopped. Usually it's driving conduct or something, then he could have crossed one.
I look forward to your off week reports. I read each paragraph intently, because some of the stuff, I mean, you're saving lives out there. The last one, I think, just had, you had somebody crossing the center line for quite a lot of time, and it just, it still astounds me, like the mayor said, it's, I just don't get it, but. Just keep up the good work, I really appreciate it. Nice job.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council member reports. I'll start with Joe.
I was attending our neighborhood meeting, I don't really have much to add, but we talked a week about real projects over there.
Attended the neighborhood meeting also on the two reconstruction of the streets. It was interesting to see, I wanna commend Craig, where things started to escalate quickly. And then by the end of the night, phase one anyway, the street, it calmed down after people sat down, got some information, and listened, and had a chance to exchange and interact. It was better, but right away it was overwhelmed and, and you did a great job there, guys. But I was glad to see the people came out, they had some good points. And again, they, they get a chance to make choices for where they're gonna live, where they currently live, and how, you know, things can be better or worse for them. So it, it was nice to see people be involved, and I hope as they get their letters, they're, they stay involved and come out. And, I mean, if you're happy with it, not happy with it, show up and you, you learn some things and you'll go away, I think, a little more informed and understand what we're trying to do here. And see that we're making improvements where you live, so that's it.
Sarah?
On the Wednesday, the January 22nd.
On, on the Wednesday, the January twenty-second, I attended a charter commission meeting. On Thursday, January twenty-third, I had a community advisory meeting here, and then I also went to the, and then on Monday, the twenty-seventh, I attended the school board
I had the distinct honor to go to the Chambers annual dinner, if you've never been to one, it was fun, there's a lot of people there that I saw from the city. I also went to the neighborhood meeting for just a few minutes, I had to go in and tweet in that night, but, so I had just a brief exchange, it was getting all, I'm glad to hear that it settled down, but, I just wanted to let our residents know, come give your input, it's not gonna be always the decision that you think you're deserving of, but you're heard, and then we have to make that decision based on what's best for the city and residents at that march, so, it was good to, to see a lot of residents there early on, so, that's all I really did this past couple weeks.
Okay. All right, well, I want to, want to couple things here, first of all, do we know how many meters are left now to change out? Do you know that?
As many as, like, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Well, less than two percent.
Okay, so that mailing has helped, okay, it's gotten their attention, good, so we hope to get these done.
There's some, some of those are vacant, and, and some.
So what do we do in the case of vacant, break the door, or what?
Yeah, we call up.
Come, come, ram the door this morning.
No, it's just trying to work with, find somebody, but when they're vacant, you know, and it's just, uh, bankroll, we're not gonna find any money.
All right, so it's bankroll, then what do we do then, eventually, despite the meter off, or what?
No, we, as soon as, as, we could probably, I know we shut off a lot of the vacancies right away, and then, at that point, before they get turned back on, you know, they have to call us, and we could go out and change out the meter, and then get it fixed.
Right, but as of that mailing, the way we did it was, we gave thirty days to schedule, on the thirty-first day, if it's not scheduled, the clock ticks for the $350 fine. Okay, so now they've been, they've been more. Second of all, I want to ask you, this has come to my attention here with my water bill, what is late with Opus billing? I mean, I got this, you know, it's due on the tenth, and I get it like a, like a five day period before, I mean, I'm always amazed with Opus, some billing times are.
It was late this month.
It was late this month, and another time it was, it was two, by the way.
They, they've had some issues, this, this new meters, I mean.
That's what I was wondering, this new meters.
It's, you know, it's, it's Ferguson sending in the information, and right now, the system isn't talking to Opus, you know, they have some issues there, so it's, get the, get Ferguson to get the meter readings, get them over to Opus, Opus and Ferguson has some problems, goes back to Ferguson, you know, it's, they try, they're trying to get them out, some are not getting out until like, probably the last day of the month. I've been telling Opus why we're having these issues, we don't put out late fees until right before the bill.
That's right.
You know, so people, you know, we don't, we don't put it always on on the tenth of the month, because we're closed at city halls, so.
And mailing and stuff like that.
So, like I said, the last couple months, I've told them, I said, don't put those late fees on until the last possible moment before you do a bill.
Okay, so basically, what you're saying is, is part of the, which the transition we're doing, where are we with the software, is that, did it close to being up?
I know that they are waiting, from what I understand, Ferguson is waiting on Opus to do something, something with, the software, the file format wasn't correct, and so it was then Opus having to deal with that, that it used to be one way, and now it needs to change, and so, anything like that, just, it takes a little bit of time to get that going.
Right, but once, also let public know, we're not, we're not, we're not penalizing that for during this period that we're going through transition. Still pay your bills, but if it comes a day or two days later, whatever, we're not penalizing for that.
Yeah, and I know of, of some bills that I've got up really late, I know one gentleman, he emailed me just last week, and I said, I looked into the system, and I said, it isn't printed yet, if you don't get it by today, please email me. He did email, and he had gotten it today, and then, yes, he was complaining about the short timeframe, like, they're due on the tenth of the month, every month.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you, you see, normally it gets up two weeks ahead of time, not more than two weeks at least.
Yeah, they, they usually are supposed to come out on the twentieth, and I don't know if you guys know this, but Opus actually prints them down in Florida, I've been told. They work, they, they have a lot of business down there, and that's just where they, their hard bills are actually made from Florida, is what I've been told.
Really? I mean, and, and, you know, so, I mean, even though I got it today, it's not due to the tenth, and it just, you know, you get five days to get the same fault that you get there at Opus.
Oh, yeah, and like I said, we give them more than way past the tenth, especially right now.
So for the public viewing, you know, that late mailing is part of the, you know, the, the, going to, doing our meters, and bringing this up today to get it all aligned. So if you have a problem or an issue, please call us, Jen, if that public works, if you have a water issue, as far as you've seen something that's not, is out of norm from your usage, Jen, if it goes to a problem that can't be solved, Jen's level should do it, that's our scene, but we'll get it solved. But as, as, we stated before many times, as Rob just stated, you have to give us the opportunity to, to work with you on the problem. At the end of the day, the answer you'll get will be an honest research answer, but you have to give us the opportunity, like that one lady who came to us earlier in the meeting, that's good, because we don't, we don't know if you have a problem if you don't tell us. You know, if we were to sit out here as a council member, and go to every household twenty-four, seven, every day, well, that's just what happened, you know, tell us about that, citizen. Anyway, just kidding, but we do this because we love the jobs, not for the money we do this, for profit. Anyway, also, I just wanted to let everybody know, on the seventeenth, President's Day, the city offices will be closed. February eighth is St. Francis Lance Prozessa, quote unquote, A Valentine Experience, Elvis Remembering the King, at the American Legion, five thirty PM dinner, show starts at seven, that should be interesting. February eighteenth, city council meeting, of course, Tuesday following that holiday, and then February nineteenth, planning commission meeting at St. Francis City Schools District at seven. At this time, if there's no further business with the city council meeting, I'm gonna read what the, what the city agenda. In a few minutes, I'm going to close the meeting, under Minnesota State Statute, Section thirteen, D point zero three subdivision one, the city council has the ability to move into a closed meeting. Everybody, the city may, by a majority vote in a public meeting, decide to hold a closed meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies, or developments, or discussion, and review of later negotiation proposals. As we stated two years ago, we came on, pretty much the only time we'll go to closed meetings will be for labor negotiations, anything else, we'll leave it open to the public and keep you aware of what we're doing, but this is state guided, so we'll follow that guy, that guidance. Labor negotiations are, are proposals between the city of St. Francis and law enforcement labor services, police officers. I now ask, I'm reading this list as it was given to me, I now ask for a motion to move the meeting into a closed session for discussion of labor negotiations.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Muir makes that motion, is there second?
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes that second, once the vote approved, the council should move it to a closed session. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you for staffs being.